This conference will now be recorded.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Good day. So, we will call to order the Monterey Select Board. It's October 27, 1:29 PM.
It's going out over the airwaves.
So, the purpose of today's meeting is a short agenda. We are interviewing two candidates for police chief and all of the Select Board members are present. Right? We're all present at home.
Unless there's another one, I don't know. It looks like we are.
We're not five members yet, I guess. So, Jeffrey Postel is at the address. So, thank you for joining us. If you want to take a seat here. So, this is obviously the second round of interviews. So, we've heard that you presented well during the first round and thank you for this.
Thank you.
This is the same one you submitted previously, right?
The original is up there.
Okay.
Welcome to Monterey.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest. Do you want to present on why you're interested in the job of police chief in Monterey and then do you get into some questions for you?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm just a flightboard into the city of the town of Monterey. Thank you for your opportunity and thank you for your time today. I realized last night it was a pretty lengthy meeting. I was tuned in watching that meeting. So, I appreciate you guys being back in today to meet with us. This is a good opportunity for me. I come, as you can tell, really not from Massachusetts. I have a southern accent. That southern accent is from the state of North Carolina where I was born and raised. I moved to Massachusetts in 2009 after serving in municipal law enforcement in North Carolina at the capacity of Assistant Chief of Police in a small town, comparatively about the size of Monterey, a little bit bigger, about 1,600 population of that town before moving up here and beginning my law enforcement, police and career here in Massachusetts. Currently been in the Boston College Police Department and Higher Education, campus law enforcement now since 2009 and have climbed through the ranks to my current role as lieutenant. And in that role, I'm in charge of the Bureau of Patrol Services and Operations, which oversees about 52, well, actually about 40 some odd sworn police officers, about 52, 55 members of the department as a whole. We're an accredited police department where the ninth Campus Law Enforcement Department was accredited in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and I was involved in that process. I serve as an accreditation assessor with the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. I have also been very heavily involved with community policing and community outreach and crime prevention throughout my entire career in law enforcement. And my efforts and initiatives here in the Commonwealth have certainly helped land me recognition through the state as the inaugural winner of the Sean Collier Award for Innovation of Community Policing. And if anyone doesn't know who Sean Collier is, he was the MIT police officer that was killed in the Marathon bombings, in the shootings of the MIT campus. And the award was named in his recognition and memory for innovation of community policing. And again, as I mentioned, I was the inaugural winner of that award many years ago. And so, that just reemphasizes my passion and my motivation and commitment to community outreach. And Monterey, obviously, kind of takes me back to my roots in a way. Small town, somewhere where I really thrive and flourish and I appreciate the values of small-town atmosphere and small-town policing because at the end of the day, it takes the entire community. And I think the police department requires that type of an approach when dealing with problems that are facing the community. And I'm excited about that opportunity. For me, it's a different pace. The city pace is the city pace and I'm one that prefers a little bit more of a country pace. I prefer this, this small town where you get to have a more intimate setting with people and get to know more about the root causes of problems and really kind of develop some of the strategies and solutions to solve some of the problems that may be facing the community as well as focusing on ways to plan for the future.
Thank you. Do Susan or Scott, do you have any questions?
Well, can you follow up a little on the community policing? So, what, if you weren't aware, you must have done something. Tell us a little about what you did.
Yeah. So, I was the first supervisor to ever be promoted to the rank of sergeant in charge of a community policing program. And one of the things we did, specifically in a setting of a college campus, is we're dealing a lot with young people and youth. And that can be a challenge in its own self to be able to bridge that gap between the youth and police and specifically develop a sense of trust and respect as well as collaboration. And I took off very quickly and based really solely on my personality, being able to connect with people fairly quickly and establishing quick relationships to build that trust and relationship. Through that, we developed through my leadership, a community resource officer program, a CRO program, which if most folks are familiar with the term SROs, School Resource Officer. So, we take that, we took that same principle and kind of applied it to more of a community sense because we wanted it to have that community feel. And I was one of the leaders in charging that. We developed a bigger footprint in our social media platform, which is very important. That's where our communities are now. They're online, they're social, they're virtual. And we branded our social media footprint and leveraged that to not only develop relationships, but also educate our community, to showcase our department, to showcase the efforts and the services that we provided, again, in an effort to keep people safe and be aware of what was going on and to help protect the community as a whole, a larger part. We were also really focused on dehumanizing, well, not dehumanizing, humanizing.
I was going to say that. You want to go the other way.
D is, we'll come back to that in a moment, more humanizing the badge and, you know, creating that culture where folks are viewed, our officers are viewed as part of the community just as they are and that we have common goals and we share those common goals. In addition to that, crime prevention efforts to focus on trends and data of crimes to address those things and help put into place programming that would have prevention measures and efforts. We've done a whole host of things outside of that. I'm heavily involved and was heavily involved, been heavily involved in Special Olympics. I served as the statewide campus law enforcement director for the law enforcement course run for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I've done a lot of work out here in Berkshire County with Special Olympics, with Pittsfield Police. There was a lot of my connections at Pittsfield with fundraising efforts. So, again, it's all efforts to really kind of humanize the badge, show that we're humans, that we have the same similar interests. And it was really focused on building and bridging that gap and that trust with our community members. Now, in addition to that, I bring a lot of experience from my time in municipal policing where I was very steadfast in implementing Neighborhood Watch programs within our community as well as Safe for Senior programs that would educate our elders on ways to prevent being targeted for scams and other online and types of targeted crimes towards those folks. In addition to creating a youth police academy and a youth explorer group that would help garner our youth that may have some interest in policing. So, I could go on and on about community policing. Community policing is very important to me and it's probably the one of the most important aspects of policing specifically in today's time.
One question that I have for you is, was there any reason why you transitioned from municipal policing to college campus policing? And I know it sounds like your first college job, it was a public safety department and now it's actually at Boston College, it's sworn police officers. Was there any, you know, reason why you went that route instead of continuing on with municipal or city police?
Great question and I appreciate that question. As anyone knows, Commonwealth of Massachusetts is very challenging because of its civil service laws. And my academy from North Carolina was accepted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I have not had to go through a Commonwealth of Mass Police Academy because I met the standard set forth by the MPPC, the Mass Police Training Council. I am also accepted through the new standards under post. And so, part of that is civil service. I took tests. I scored within the high 90 percentile, 98 to be exact. And the highest I ever got on the test because of veteran statuses and other preferences that civil service guidelines on, I ended up about 40 or 50 on some municipal departments. So, I found myself at Boston College and to be frankly honest with you, I had every expectation of going back into municipal policing, but I thoroughly enjoyed the campus environment. I enjoyed being able to work with our youth and being a positive role model and breaking barriers down of the perception of policing and have been very successful in doing so. And so, I also don't see policing very different, to be frankly honest with you. What we do at Boston College is very similar to what I did in North Carolina as a municipal police officer. It's all about two basic principles, take care of the people and take care of the problems. And I think that's applicable in any situation.
Thank you. So, our population is a bit more elderly, about 65% of our population in Monterey is 65 years or older. How much experience do you have with seniors? And, you know, you do, I agree, some of it's the same, but some of it's not. So, can you speak to how you approach that?
Much like the 65 percentage that are 65 and older here in the town of Monterey, it's very similar to what it was in South Carolina with a very aging population. It was very similar to Monterey, veteran community, retirement, higher retirement folks with that percentile. And again, it's all about the development of that. And let me just back up to one other thing about my ability to connect with seniors. I was adopted and raised by my grandparents. My dad, who was my grandfather, was a WWII veteran. My mom was born in the 1930s. They both worked in the textile mills in North Carolina. So, I was raised by traditionalists and I'm a lot more mature than most folks my age when it comes to that and I attribute that to my parents and to the upbringing. Some really quickly early on values, to never forget where you come from, to never forget the people who helped you get to where you are. And those are things that I think are not really taught much anymore. And I attribute all that to my upbringing. I attribute that to where I am today because of the way I was brought up by my parents. We grew up very poor. And so, I value a lot of things that many, that many don't understand. And so, that helps. Secondly, the community in which I served in North Carolina, where I began my law enforcement, policing career, again, a lot of retirement, a lot of elderly. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the very first things early on in my career was the chief of police came to me and says, handed a packet to me and it said, have this nicely bright orange sign on it with this shadow of a silhouette and it said Neighborhood Watch. He says, I would like for you to take this and see what you can do. It's never been able to take off here. But within the first year, I had four Neighborhood Watch programs running successfully and one that was directed solely towards our seniors in a senior living complex. And we had a Safe for Senior program there. And that really targeted those folks to help them, again, create a culture where they were cared about, where they were, where there was a level of attention to the things that were focused towards them the most, being victimized of scams and crimes. And actually, I'll never forget, I was in, I was an hour away at a conference one day and got a phone call from our dispatch and we had a home invasion in our senior housing area. And the young lady, as I call her, did everything she could because she recognized, because of the educational outreach and efforts that we had put forth in our program, she recognized very early on that it was something not right about what was being presented at her door. Unfortunately, she was overpowered and, but thankfully was not injured. Could have ended up differently, but she definitely was able to pick up on the cues that we had taught. And I think that that's, I just, I think because of the way and where I come from, I just have a different level of respect for that and care an awful lot. And I think that also has helped me in my role also outside of being in law enforcement, being a city councilor. I'm an elected official in the city of Taunton, population about 60,000. I was a newcomer to the city, strongly Portuguese, again, higher age bracket of residents. And my first time out for running for office in a field of about 17 people, I came in first place. And I think that attributes to my ability to connect and relate to people, especially when you knock on people's doors and you're talking about what's important to those folks. And I think that just is an addition to the way that I can connect with people very early on. Again, to be an outsider, to not speak like them, not be from that area and to be able to top the ticket and be elected two additional times where I'm serving my third term, I think that says a lot.
So, one thing that we're speaking of elderly people, senior citizens, and one thing that happens in Monterey sometimes is the police are called to check in on a senior citizen who may not be answering the phone of a relative or something like that. Is that something that you've dealt with and kind of what, when you're going into a situation like that, what mindset are you, what are you looking for and how do you execute when you, if you were to be called to like a well-being check for an elderly person?
Yeah, well-being checks should be treated fairly and consistently across the board regardless of a person's age. There's a reason for that. And there may be a lot of information that we need to gather to give us and paint us a better picture of what we're actually going into. So, I would treat that very much as a priority. I would actually, before that, we would create, it's not already created a program where we check on our elderly on a weekly basis, where we make a phone call or we go visit with them. I think it's very important for that. As a police officer, as a police department, we're public servants and we have to take care of our folks. And so, if we're not doing that, that would be something that I would implement very quickly as a check-in program where we make the effort to do that, our most vulnerable residents. As it relates to checking in on a call for service, when people call, we go. Plain and simple. And we will, we will deal with that. Your question was a very, very interesting question because you asked, what are you looking for? And I think what you want me to say is exactly what I would do. I'm looking for things that would give me a picture that there might be something going on in that home that we need to be aware of, that we need to maybe provide some resources, some social services on, or maybe give them directions to outreach efforts within Berkshire County or the Commonwealth or through our elected officials or through the town. Being able to identify those little cues, those underlying issues that may be presenting there, one of the things that's very important in policing is not to knee-jerk react. We need to get that medium mile perspective and see the big picture of things. And I think that holds true in this situation, is getting the clear picture of what may be going on for that person. And unfortunately, having some tough decisions with some loved ones and giving them the accurate truth. You know, I'll tell you, my mother lived until she was eight and she was still in North Carolina. We were in the process of moving her up here. And every time I went home, I could see a decrease. I could see a decline in her health. And that's a, that's a very raw thing to see. And so, we need to make sure that if folks are, we're seeing that as a decline, we're trying to connect that through social services and through efforts and resources and support networks that we have available. Or if we don't have it available, then we need to, as a community, put our heads together with other communities and start thinking like that. We don't help important people. And I think making sure that our seniors are cared for is important, very important.
Another item that comes up quite a bit in Monterey is speeding and traffic safety. We have, you know, Route 23 going through town. And in your time at the Boston College and before, what methods have you found to work with, you know, keeping the road safe? And how would, how would you try to keep the road safe and keep people going at a reasonable speed? And also, how would you train others, you know, other officers to do the same thing? Because we've had a spectrum of different police officers with very different views in the past on how to handle that. Just to what, what kind of things you're looking for and what experience you've had with traffic control and speeding?
Well, again, thanks for that question. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to go further back in my career. I was, I was one of the first traffic officers in North Carolina. We started the traffic team in North Carolina that dealt with speed enforcement, traffic mitigation, traffic safety. I'm also a grant rider. I didn't mention that already. I'm also a grant rider and I was also able to secure the town of Murphy when I was Assistant Chief of Police, between $75,000 to $100,000 in funding for traffic safety. And that would involve a vehicle, speed enforcement radar equipment, as well as traffic safety equipment and checkpoint equipment. And we had very similar to that. We had a very high traffic crash rating and we utilized a lot of effort, not just in enforcement. Again, policing is policing. Enforcement sometimes can hurt people. And I would say that enforcement is not always the right answer to every problem. Just arresting people is not the right answer to every problem. It's a tool in our toolbox and an ability that we have and you have to take that very seriously and with great reserve and regard. So, education, education is very important. I've spent many, I've spent a few days over the last month or so out here, both direct and indirect, both knowing that I was here and both knowing that I wasn't here. And what I've typically done is just sit back and watch. And I'll tell you, even this morning on Route 23 here, from the oldest town line all the way to the Great Barrington line, I drove and one of the biggest things I picked up on was speed. And it doesn't take much to see the speed enforcement radar monitoring units put on speed, speed limit signs to recognize very early on, very quickly that we had a speed issue. And as we were talking earlier, when you, when you introduce weather and road conditions and you also introduce personal involvement and abilities, you're, you're creating a little bit of a disaster there. And I also like to determine if it's predictable or preventable. And so, if we know we have those problems, we need to address it. Training wise, let me back up. I don't think that I want the town of Monterey to be known as a speed, speed trap capital of the world, but I want to make a clear message that if you're going to come to our community, putting our residents and others and business at risk, then we're going to, we're going to handle that. But I think we also do it through, through a compassionate effort, through education, where we, as we work through government, the Governor's Highway Safety Council and programs through that mechanism and awarenesses, but we try to educate the community that there's responsibilities on their part to keep them and our communities as a whole safe. As for training, every officer that comes out of the academy typically comes out of the academy with, with training with radar and other speed measurement devices. And I would expect, as I've observed, the current police cruisers that are here, at least the one, there are speed measurement devices in those vehicles. I would expect those to be used. If the town and the towns, townspeople have put their tax money, whether it be through the town's efforts or through grants, into those pieces of equipment, then they should be using them. It's how we use them, it's how we exercise our authority and our power that is important though. And again, I think it goes through a level of education and then using enforcement towards the end. And I also think that each situation is a case-by-case situation. But the officers should be given the ability to be able to do their job.
Question. With the regard of speeds is where I'm at, subject. It seems as though in the local court in Great Barrington, I'm not certain if that term is magistrate, seems in the past to throw out or reduce known speeding violations that cost the town time and policing, paperwork, the potential for injury and safety. How would you deal with, with, let's just say, a judge or whoever is presiding over the case, or cases? How would you deal with somebody that lets these things slide by without so much as the underst, or just that layman at that? How would you deal with magistrate not really taking as much care as we would like them to do and perhaps he was a chief or he was even just an officer who knowingly pulled somebody over that was, say, 15,000 miles and then they just poo-poo it? How do you deal with that and what's the system?
Oh, wow. Yeah, you're speaking. If only I had the actual answer for that because that's a challenge. I mean, honestly, that's not just a challenge for, for this area, it's a challenge across the country in terms of policing and the criminal justice system and court system. I will tell you that I'm a firm believer in that absolutely there needs to be reforming, there needs to be evaluation, there needs to be reassessments to the way we do business. That's why accreditation is important. That's why policy development is important. Criminal justice system needs to be reformed. I will say that first and foremost. I am not prepared to hide that. There needs to be an evaluation there because you're right. And I have been on the receiving end of that in my, in my career where you have made a very solid case against an individual and whether it be an arrest or whether it be a summons or whether it be a citation and the court just kind of brushes it off. And that hurts. It gets frustrating. And I think it's very important that we recognize that we're humans, we can get frustrated, but we have to also circle back very quickly, remember that we have a responsibility, we have a job to do and we have an hope to uphold and an image to uphold. And we have to continue getting out there and getting at it. It may seem like, for lack of better words, you're settling, you know, what against the tide, but we have to be steadfast and we have to be strong in our convictions of what our responsibilities and our principles are. So, to then get into a little bit more of what I would do is very quickly and early on, I'm an outsider obviously coming in, so I have a different perspective. I'm able to see things through a different set of lenses. And I may have some things that may work and I may have some things that I might need to focus on that might have historical data or knowledge from folks within this area that might work. But I would do it very simply by having conversations with our district attorneys, with our ADAs, with our court magistrates. I would have conversations with other police chiefs in the area to assess what the problems that they may be facing and develop some strategies to approach that. I think having some conversations early on, I think this, and with, with me in this role, I think it gives me an opportunity to set that, that door, you know, kind of open that door already because one of the first things I want to do is have meetings very quickly with surrounding areas because obviously the town of Monterey and its size and capacity depends very heavily on the mutual aid and resources of other agencies and other departments as do they with us. And so, I want to make sure that we have a good working relationship established, exchange of ideas, but also that, that also leads and leads into our court system because we unfortunately at times will have to make an arrest. I believe seven last year, five the year before, so there are arrests that are made and we have to have that relationship with our courts. And on the flip side of that, if there's something that we're not doing right, if we're missing checking the right box or crossing the right T or dotting the right I, then that's a training thing that we need, that's something training, that's internal that we may need to work on. That's why we may need to have a reassessment or development of some policies or procedures for better understanding. Maybe perhaps, and again, I don't know, maybe perhaps we need to evaluate the way officers are testifying in court and writing their reports. So, I think there's a whole host of things that we can do to try to work on that, but I think at the end of the day, it comes down to persistency, sir. We have to remain consistent and we have to remain committed to doing our, our job and doing what is expected of us, even when we seem like it's an uphill battle and frankly, policing builds like that sometimes, yeah. But we have to remain committed in our, in our convictions for that. Thanks for that answer. Appreciate that very much.
To change topics, but you mentioned that you've successfully written some grants. One thing that we expect the police chief here in Monterey is preparing a budget for each year, managing the budget throughout the year and also, you know, helping to write any grants or take a lead on grants related to the police department. So, do you want to expand on what experience you have writing grants and budgeting?
Budgeting as Assistant Chief of Police, we were responsible at the time I was there, about $600,000 budget for the police department. That was something that we proposed every year to the town council and to the town manager. So, I was responsible for not only researching and forecasting expenses, but vetting them, making sure. Let me just back up. I'm a very fiscally conservative person and I'm going to put my city councilor hat on because at the end of the day, there's only so many tax dollars that goes around and we have to be very mindful of that. And as I mentioned to the town administrator last week, unless you have a money tree somewhere in town that none of us have found, and I believe she said she has not found it either, we are, we're looking for it and we will continue to look for it, we have to be very mindful of that because there's only so many dollars that can be stretched. And so, that's why it's important to And so that's why it's important, uh, to very early on create, not necessarily a once, but have some once, but prioritization. I believe in prioritizing what we need, but forecasting that out. And as I mentioned, I, I see this as an opportunity that you're hiring a chief of police, not for yesterday, not for today, but for the future. And that's what I think is important. Uh, and what I bring is that, is that forecast, that outward look, uh, being able to, to do our best to make sure that we're making every effort, every right step in the right direction, every right foot forward, uh, to making sure that we are being as transparent as possible, that we're being very honest and open, uh, when we come before the town council, uh, town sled board, um, for funding opportunities to support, uh, police operations and keep our community safe. But at the end of the day, there's only so much that can go around. And so we have to prioritize our, we have to know what our needs are. And I realize most of the, the funding and the, and the town's, uh, budget, uh, for police is in salaries. And, uh, and that's an important aspect of it in terms of, it all kind of triples down to recruitment, retention, uh, providing the necessary tools and resources to our officers to keep them safe and also to be able to provide them with the resources to do their job adequately and efficiently. Um, but I think decisions have to be made in timely ways and in, and, and with every ounce of attention to detail. For every action that we take, there's an equal and opposite reaction. So for everything that we do, for every purchase we make, there's, there's something else that's going to be impacted and affected. And so I think that's important. And that's one of the things I've learned over my years for budgeting. Currently I still oversee, I, I still am responsible for budgeting, uh, proposals, requests, um, RFQs, RF, you know, RFPs, all those things for funding. I also am responsible for the department's fleet, so I purchase the vehicles currently, as I did in North Carolina as well. Um, and so I have established relationships throughout Commonwealth and around the country based on my experience to, when it comes down to, you know, resources and procurement for, uh, for police, police equipment. Um, I believe your, a good question on this was?
Grant writing.
Grant writing. Um, so I have been a grant writer since North Carolina. I'm a grant writer now. I'm in the process right now of, of, uh, developing some, uh, grant research, grant funding to support community policing activities and initiatives as well as community resource, uh, outreach, um, such as a comfort dog, a canine. Uh, and there's, and there's a lot of funding for that. I think that's a great resource for a police department is a, is a, is a, is a comfort dog.
Sorry, a lot of us with dogs are smiling now and you can't have it.
Now, I, I, I love dogs and they're the only people, the only thing when you come home from a bad day and they're sitting there wagging their tail at the door, uh, they're, they're happy to see you regardless. Uh, that, that quickly runs off in about five minutes when they're begging for food and they're cracking blood all over the place. But, but I think that that's another area to explore, um, for funding. That's what we're doing now. But also through the Governor's Highway Safety Program in North Carolina, I know the Commonwealth has a lot of different grants out there through EOCs, uh, the Executive Office of Public Safety, as well as the Governor's Highway Safety Council for traffic related, uh, funding. And as, again, as I mentioned, I was able to secure between $75,000 to $100,000 of grant funding in North Carolina when I was there for highway traffic safety, um, equipment and, uh, education.
Um, as a follow-up question, um, what, what standard equipment do your officers typically carry out at DC? And how would you like to see that change in the future there? But also what do you think would be appropriate for a small, um, community?
In terms of equipment?
Mm-hmm.
For their, for their officers?
Yeah, for their officers. I mean, the, the cruisers, the cruisers.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think, uh, it, there's a lot of different opportunities. I mean, the, the days, the, the, the day the conversation began was. Um, for us, um, our officers are equipped with the standards that most officers have. We, we carry firearms, we carry long guns. Uh, we have, um, equipment that will allow us to get into any type of building regardless of the, um, blocking mechanism or the devices that are securing it, uh, through breaching equipment. Uh, we have rapid response equipment, uh, to deal with, um, to deal with serious tendencies. Uh, we also have mobile, mobile data terminals, MDTs in our cars. Uh, we have had, we do not presently, but we have had in-car technology cameras. Uh, we do not at this point have body cams, although I do know body cams are a very hot topic item right now. And there is funding for those, grant funding for that as well.
What's your, what's your opinion of body cams?
I think they're a great asset. I really think they're a great asset. But to the chairman of the board, because here we go back to your comment a minute ago about budget. There's a lot of money that comes with that. And it's not just in terms of the actual body cam itself. What we have to be very mindful of is the retention of the, of the records and the files contained on that. Security, safeguarding and retention, servers, that's where it gets expensive. And, uh, and so we would have, if that's something the town is, is interested in doing, uh, that's something that we can certainly have a discussion on and I would certainly welcome that. Let me just say this, I think when it comes down to the equipment for the town of Monterey, one of the most important things is to realize you probably have one, maybe two officers on it at any given time. So officer safety is the most paramount thing at this point. Because the nearest backup for an officer in the town of Monterey could be, it's going to be heavily relied on our surrounding communities and the state police. And who knows what their call volume is at that time and where their locations are. So I think any type of opportunity we have, whether it be through, through town funding when, when applicable or through state funding or federal grant funding, uh, we, we, we employ as much opportunity and focus on safeguarding the safety of our officers every day of the week, every hour of the day. Whether that be body cams, whether that be pagers, whether that be less lethal options, we need to make sure our officers, and again, I work in a community where I was by my, where I spent a lot of time by myself. And a little bit about me is when I was a 21-year-old rookie police officer in North Carolina, I was working an overnight shift all by my lonesome. And I ran afoul and arrested an FBI cop who most wanted it with the national domestic terrorist and responsible for the 1996 Atlanta Olympic Park bombings. And I was by myself.
Hence Eric Greenbaum.
That's correct. And I don't use that lightly and I don't usually say that much because I'm a very humble person and that's not who I, why I am who I am today. But I use that to, to relate that you never know, regardless of the community, regardless of the size of the department, regardless of the, the time of the day, what you're going to run into. And it's important to have the tools, the training, the resources and the support equipment to handle that. Because I could have ended up being very different of an outcome. And that can happen as easy as in the town of Monterey as it happened in the town of Murphy. So we have to be ready and we have to make sure that our officers are equipped.
So one, one of the organizations in Monterey is a mental health rehabilitation facility. And I know, and people are talking a lot about mental health, uh, these days in general. Do you have experience at Boston College or in North Carolina responding to mental health crises? And what kind of mindset do you bring to those, to those calls and, and do you have experience?
Absolutely. Uh, if you, uh, yeah, absolutely. First off, absolutely. Uh, we have received in my current, in my current role, so much mental health training, um, and recognition responding to individuals that may have, uh, going through some type of crisis and early on, early signs of recognition, um, and what presents and ways to, to de-escalate that. De-escalation is another one of those, uh, things that comes with that, uh, in dealing with folks that are in crisis. Frankly, every call you go on is a no-no call. Uh, and there, there has to be a level of, of recognition, care and compassion that goes into those as it should be for any police-related incident in response. As for training, tons of training. Uh, we have, in, in our environment and the college campuses, you can imagine a lot of youth and young people that are dealing with a lot of struggles in life, uh, substance abuse in some ways perhaps, uh, conflicts, uh, with, with, uh, dating violence or family violence. Uh, and then just the overall stra, struggles and stra, and, and trials that they go through in dealing with academia and focusing on grades and, and all that. So we deal with mental health personally every day. And we have had a great, uh, response to that through our collaborative partnerships with our counseling services and campus ministry. And I, and I say that to be true here because there's resources within the greater Berkshire County communities that we can employ, uh, through resources, whether it be social services or nonprofits, clergy. I believe in being able to sit at the table and have conversations with folks to develop strategy. This isn't just a police problem, this is a community problem. And so it takes the community to address those issues. And being able to, to leverage the support and the resources and the, and the help and guidance from other avenues and, and outreach, um, options to, um, to help folks with that will be, will be, would and should be a priority. Uh, and I know that we have, um, uh, a location here within the town of Monterey. Uh, and that's something that I think is very important to meet with the leadership of that, of that, of that, um, service. Uh, just establish and develop some, some, some understanding and some policies as it relates to response, uh, some expectations. Um, and again, leverage and utilize support and resources from our greater communities, our other communities and find out how they're doing things. Um, I know clinician support is important. And if we see that to be a, an increasing, uh, thing here in the town of Monterey, then that's something that we can land right, maybe looking at, at, at clinician response, a real response with that. It's been successful in other parts of the country and the Commonwealth. Um, but mental health is important. But I think in terms of the response to that, it's very simple. One of the things that I talk about an awful lot is four basic principles. Being a good leader, being a good human, being a good parent, being a good public servant. More basic principles. Be caring, be compassionate, be committed and be able to communicate. I think you, you cannot go wrong with those. And that's something that I, that I exercise every single day that I'm able to do. And, and, and get out and do something is to care about the community which you serve, care about the people that you serve, care about yourself, because our mental health is just as equally as important. Um, our officers' mental health is just as equally as important. Be compassionate with people, recognizing that they may be going through struggles that in their lives might be catastrophic. But at the end of the day, it's about them. They're, they're all that matters. Be committed to that. Be committed to the oath of office and, and the, and the mission of, of what we stand for. And communication is very important, not just this verbal speaking, but the non-verbal listening. And the way we, we present ourselves, body language, a lot of people, people pick up on that. And so I think that's very important with dealing with any work, but mostly I've been very successful throughout my years in law enforcement, policing to use that to be very beneficial in dealing with people in crisis.
Jim, military service, right?
I unfortunately don't. Um, I went straight into the police academy as soon as I was old enough at 20. Uh, my father unfortunately passed away, um, three days into the police academy. Uh, and he was a World War II veteran, again, as I mentioned, so I have a great deal of respect for that. But, uh, but, um, my, my career path was, was a little different.
Um, how do you feel your leadership style might change in moving from a department with more than 50 officers to a more, you know, you want to help?
Uh, no different than it was in North Carolina, very small department.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago.
And I imagine your style has evolved over the years and you've spent, you've been there since 2009. That's quite a while in a big department.
Yeah.
How do you think, like, how would you adjust to it? How's it, do you think it would affect you and how do you think you would work to establish rapport with the officers, I guess? Like, the, we've been talking about the community, but now I'm bringing it into, into that room.
Right, yeah, yeah. I think, I think, I, I, I will joke with you and say, you can take the, the boy out of the country, but you can't take the country out of the boy. I think you can take me out of the role of North Carolina, but the role of North Carolina is rich in me. Um, because it's, it's, it's fabric of who I am, uh, just the way I was up, I was brought up. Uh, so I think my leadership styles have certainly evolved. Um, but they still stick with the same principles. Again, I, listen, let me, let me just say this. People can laugh, they can roll their eyes at my four seasons of effective leadership, care, compassion, media communication. You think that is a, again, but let me tell you, I live that every day. As honest as the day is long, I live that every single day because that's where I am today. That's what got me to where I am today. It's the way I was told to be, that's the way I was raised to be. And so that has helped develop me as a leader throughout my years. And if it's done anything, it's, it's made me better, it's improved my ability. I'm more of a glass half empty and half full. I don't see it one or the other. I believe there's always two sides. I always try to find myself in the middle to figure out, you know what? We might not agree on this, but I want to know why you feel so strongly about it. And then I want you to hear why I feel so strongly about this in this, in this sense. Because I think that's where common ground is found. And we hear in politics all the time, oh, I'm a, I believe in common ground. Give me a break. Common ground is sitting there and saying, you know, we may have differences of opinion, but I'm going to respect your opinion and I'm going to listen to your opinion. And I'm going to listen to your ideas. And all I ask in this return is you listen to what I have to say as well because we might learn something together and we might be able to take a little bit of what you got, a little bit of what I got, and we might come up with something special. We might come up with something that can change the way business is done. We might be on the cutting edge of something that is innovative, that other departments, other communities may be going, what are you guys doing? How did you do this? Leadership is all about recognizing that. You never stop learning. You don't know it all. Admit your mistakes, listen to what your people are telling you, listen to, to the ideas that they have and, and, and begin kind of combining all that, that information, that raw information into something. I also believe in leading by example. I, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I like to work. I'm not afraid to hustle. And I think you lead by example and you talked about, we talked a little, you know, last time we talked about a struggle of recruitment. I think when you were trying to recruit, uh, people to a small department with limited resources and things like that, you're, you're kind of pigeonholed into an area. So what do you do other than nothing? You create an environment where people feel supported, trusted, respected, believed in, cared about. They feel that compassion, they know they're committed to. And you communicate with them every step of the way. That creates an environment that people want to be a part of. And I've always learned that happy people are productive people. People are happy, they're going to be productive for you, they're going to do things for you. But I also don't ask people to do something that I wouldn't do myself. And I think that's important in a role in a department this size. And again, why a department this size? Because it's not coming home to me. I flourish in a small community. I, this is, this is, this is, this is, this is who I am. And I think for me, those types of traits will be something that will be successful for our staff. And it will create a culture that people want to get part of. It's breathing a little bit of a breath of fresh air or a little bit of different outlook on things, a new perspective. And things that might have not worked 10, 20 years ago, five years ago, we reevaluate it, we reassess it. That's something I think that needs to be done. We need to have a program, administrative program or review of the department to figure out what works and what might not work and what could be improved upon. I think the department here has been served very well. You have your chief of police setting in for the selection process for his replacement. That says a lot. Says a lot about him, says a lot about the town and the, and the commitment to, to him and, and what he's done in his time. And I think it's only to build upon that. And I think you, 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 you create an environment where people want to have a part of that because it's, it gives a sense of pride.
So in your, in your time man, being a supervisor managing Officer Floyd, what have you done when you've seen poor conduct or excessive force being used? Because I know you've talked a lot about how you carry yourself and lead by example. Um, but you know, when you do see something that is not appropriate or, or poor conduct, uh, you know, one thing that has been brought up in the past few years on the national level was the use of excessive force by police officers. And I don't know if that came up on the college campus especially because a lot of young people were especially in tune with excessive force being used. So, uh, have you seen, have you witnessed or, or been recorded that officers who worked, that you supervised had poor conduct or used excessive force and how do you respond to that?
Absolutely. I think you've got a question. Police legitimacy is a huge thing. We have, there has to be a creation of legitimacy, legitimacy of police in the community and what our purpose is. And again, that goes hand in hand with the trust and the respect and the confidence in our, in our abilities to do our jobs. And unfortunately, there's been isolated instances throughout our country that continues to diminish the good work that, that professional police departments and professional police officers and, and professionals in that, in that area and realm do every day. It, it makes, it, it takes a profession to step back. And unfortunately, we have to continue trying to just chip away at it. And that comes through, uh, policy development, clear, clear set of expectations of what the responsibilities and role for the officers are, under clear understanding of what the level and constitution of use of force is all about. Making sure that there is a evaluation, making sure our officers are on top of the recent and most up-to-date self-defense and defensive tactic trends. And also, and defensive tactic trends, and also nonverbal and verbal judo or deescalating resources and abilities. But my experience over the years is yes, I've had unfortunately experience in dealing with citizen complaints. Some have, most, if not all, have been unfounded. However, there are, there have been occasions where they were founded. And unfortunately, discipline had to be handed out. I'm a progressive, progressive discipline type of person. I believe in creating a case. As you mentioned earlier about criminal justice and producing things to the courts. It's all about building a case. You have to have the elements. And that doesn't mean that there aren't behavior and actions that are as outlandish as highest regard that goes from zero to sixty, and you have to take immediately action in terms of suspension or even termination. But on the, on the theory of it, progressive discipline, I prefer that. I prefer having the ability to evaluate and review behavior and performance evaluations to then identify early on if there's something that we need to be concerned about, if there's a trend there or if there is an area that we may be vulnerable in. Because again, we're in a profession that offers the opportunity for some litigation to the town. And so making sure that we have the highest set of standards, the best training possible will help only reduce that opportunity and that chance. But being able to create those systems to evaluate that. And make sure that if we see that, if we hear that, if we notice that, then we're addressing it very quickly. I believe in swift and immediate response to things. I don't believe in sitting on things very long. I believe you have to give a very fair process. Citizen complaints is a very, very important thing when they are made to the department or to the community, to the town. Is following up with that, making sure that we have a level of transparency and a level of communication that explains every step of the process along the way to the complainant. And that if there is action that needs to be taken, remedial, training, disciplinary actions, that that is conveyed. And again, listen, I don't think anyone at this table in this room likes to have to say, here, discipline people. I have a twenty-one-year-old son. I didn't like to discipline him. And unfortunately, there was things that had to happen. And that's the same in this case is if we do not act, if we do not follow through, it only diminishes the respect, the character of our department, of our community and of our profession. And that has a lot to ride on it. So yes, I have unfortunately had to take disciplinary action against staff members in the past. I have had, I'm a internal affairs investigator. So I unfortunately had to go through that process and I've had to make some tough decisions and referrals. Not only to, to actions in terms of riding people up and suspending people, but all the way up to the point of termination. It's not something that I like to do, but I'm also not afraid to do it.
Will you answer directly to as your, who's your supervisor?
So I have a, I have a very interesting role as the operations commander for the police department. I have a dual reporting line. I report to the deputy chief of police and I report to the chief of police. And the chief of police is reported to on certain dotted line areas. I'm also the department's PIO, which is a public information officer. I oversee all the department's outreach, social media presence, website design, all that sort of stuff, public relations and press releases. So I work through the chief's office on that, but directly, I report directly to the deputy chief of police with a dotted line for the chief.
So you understand how the town administrator role operates and how that system works here in town?
Correct. Town administrator would be someone who I would report to as a day-to-day operations supervisor, understanding that she is in charge of the day-to-day operations of the town as the administrator. And that the select board is there as a resource and also as our support, our guiding, if you will, for the community as well as the folks who help, if not not only help, but are charged with responsibilities of developing the bylaws and the, and also the budget. And that all works through the town manager. So I understand that the chain of command is, as well as the organizational chart that is, that is online, that the town administrators, who I will directly report to and work with on a day-to-day basis for needs. But I also recognize that I have a town board that seems like they're fairly active and fairly involved with things within the town, as I tuned in last night to your town council, town board meeting. And I think that each of you also play a very important role in that as well, in terms of being informed of what's going on within the community. But on a day-to-day basis, I understand the town administrator here and I will become very close friends.
How many officers do you envision on Monterey, being part-time?
No, that's a good question. I think you are seeing a, so you're seeing a, an increase in population. Population is just a little over a thousand now compared to the 2020 census of around nine hundred, middle nine hundred. So you're seeing a little bit of an uptick in population. And to be frankly honest with you, with the beauties of this community, I'm surprised it's not continuously growing. I think there is about six or seven pieces of property that is currently up for sale for land use, so there is an opportunity for some growth. I also think from the 2021 to the 2022 annual report, you've seen about a fifteen percent increase in calls for service for the police department from six hundred to a little over seven hundred. So there is an increase and that will continue to increase. The problem not only is the fact of the increase, it's the complexity of the calls that we get. I think the chief will, can attribute to this is that the simpleness of calls years ago is completely out the window. There's complex issues now. There's things that we have to make sure that it's vetted, that if we, if we don't take action or if we don't do the right things, there's going to be a reaction or something, we might end up there again. So I think the complexities of dealing with folks, specifically when it comes to substance abuse, mental health, you cannot just brush that off. You can't just groom it. You've got to really be focused on it and you've got to take some time with it. I think with the amount of traffic, I'd be curious to see a traffic study in the community. And if there's not been one done, I would personally work with DOT to see if we can't do some traffic studies to pinpoint areas of concern with speed and traffic crash ratings. But I think in terms of the size of the department, I think that's going to be debatable. I think that would be something that would require us, as I mentioned earlier, I would hate to give you a number right now. I would, what I would do, Mr. Jensen, is that I would, I would do an administrative program review of the department. I would pull the curtains back, open up the books, and I would start looking at every ounce of information and statistical data that we have. I would also talk to members of the community, very important as the new chief of police. I would be, as best I could, knocking on doors in the community. I know most people don't like to see a police officer knocking on the door. But I was very successful as a counselor when I first ran for office, knocking on over six thousand doors in the city of Tonkin and meeting with people at their doorsteps. And I tell you, we solved a lot of problems. And we, I garnered a lot of respect and trust. Because it says something when you come to people, asking them, what's important to you? What is it that we can do to improve your quality of life and improve the community as a whole? So I think that's important, understanding what the community's expectations are. Working again with our town administrator, working with our, our current chief of police, even though he probably is ready to, to move on with it. But I think, you know, exploring officers there, getting the feedback that we have to get, understanding what the select board thinks. Working with other department heads, I will also mention that, working with department heads. I spent, not just in policing, I was also a firefighter. I was also on an ambulance. I was a volunteer firefighter, so I get that. But so working with all those other department heads, whether it be the fire chief, whether it be the DPW director, whatever department, understanding the roles and responsibilities the police have, recognizing what our priorities are in the community and then forecasting out what we're looking at based upon data, data-driven crime, data-driven statistics, the best we can before I would probably say, well, we need to have a certain amount of this or a certain amount of that. But I certainly believe that we have to, we need to remember that as we move forward, because again, ultimately officer safety is a priority. And understanding the resources in which we depend upon, meaning the outside jurisdictions to support our efforts. But I think there's an evaluation process that will be needed to have. And I would, that would be one of the very first things I would do is an administrative program review of the department.
Any closing questions, family that you're moving up here with?
I do. I might say it from another, and we would like to leave our twenty-one-year-old son somewhere. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Our, we would, we would be, we would be looking to relocate. It's a, it's a good opportunity for us. You know, being originally from Massachusetts, I'm not, so it's still nice to be close enough to the extended family. I call them the outlaws, I'm the in-laws. But no, the in-laws, being able to be still close enough to them. I have family in Albany as well. So it's kind of a good, you know, combination. But yeah, we would be expected to move. My, my son possibly would come, I don't know. He, he is just, he's in the process right now of leaving next week for American Airlines. He's willing to be going into their flight program, their flight attendant program. So he's going to be a little on the traveling with that sense. So it looks like it would just be two of us and a hybrid thirteen-year-old Dalmatian. That, I don't know, police Dalmatian, I get it. The other thing you'll find is I don't mind to have a little sense of humor with people. It's important to show that, you know, human characteristics are impersonable. But that's ultimately what you're going to get with my package. You're going to get a twofer out this way.
One last question for me. What do you do if you don't get this job?
Well, I think.
Do you stay where you are?
Yeah, I'm very content. I'm very, I'm very well respected in my role. I think I take it and I learn from it. I would certainly hope that that would be the case. I would hope that I've been presentable enough to be a leader that you could depend upon to be your chief for the future. With everything that has to come with the new post standards and accreditation. Accreditation is an important thing, specifically for all police departments in Commonwealth. At some point will have to be accredited. And I was very heavily involved with our accreditation process. I'm an assessor, as I mentioned, so I know about the accreditation commission. And so I would like to think that I have been compelling enough to and proven my abilities to be your next chief of police. However, if that's not the case, then I am, I am the type of person that I respect the decisions that are made. May not ever understand them. But that's not, my point is, is to learn from the experience and to figure out what I can do better. And at the end of the day, I would just say this, I not only want to be a good fit for you, but I want you to be a good fit for me. And I think that's equally as important. Because it's, this is like, you know, it takes two of us. It requires us all to work together and to move in the right direction. But if I don't get it, I just keep continuing to improve myself and garnering as much experience, never changing who I am. Unfortunately, what you see is what you're going to get. I'm not going to be different. You bring me in two years from now, I may be, I may have additional experiences and life experiences, but you're going to get the same person, you're going to get the same type of attitude, you're going to get the same type of outreach, you're going to get the same commitment. But I guess in short, it's to continue bettering myself. I'm not getting younger, but I know it's the craziest thing ever. But, but, but continue to keep learning, never stop learning.
Thank you for joining us.
Can I?
Yeah.
Oh, hi. How are you? No, no, you're fine. Stephen Wise, I'm a former select board member. So I just, and I'm really, I apologize for coming in, I didn't know this was happening. The first part we were talking about was.
Murphy in North Carolina.
How big a town is Murphy?
Sixteen hundred.
About sixteen?
Yeah, about sixteen hundred population. We had a, when I first started, we had about ten officers, very commercialized. So it was relatively a good size, you know, relatively similar size in terms of, of the population wise. But it's where I began my career and it's, and I will always have high regards for that, that community and that department.
Sure. Did it have a, so it had a commercial district?
They had a commercial district, yeah. Commercial districts had a lot of similarities in terms of the traffic and the traffic crashes. We worked a lot of traffic-related incidences there. As I mentioned to the select board, we also had a very older population, elderly folks and retirement areas. So we focused a lot on our, you know, on the outreach efforts.
And then you went for, and I apologize, I came in late, so I didn't hear this, I didn't see your resume. And then you went from there to Boston?
Yep, I moved here in oh eight. I started my career at Boston College in oh nine as a, as a police officer there. And then quickly was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And then in my current role since twenty fourteen as lieutenant in charge of the Bureau of Operations and Patrol Services, which is in theory is the entire uniformed division of the department. And we're about fifty-two to fifty-five sworn police officers. So fairly mid-sized, mid-sized police department.
But that, that sounds, I mean, from, not from law enforcement, but that sounds exciting. And I think one of the challenges that we faced here in Monterey is Monterey's not exciting. I mean, I'm sorry. It's just not.
We like it that way.
Yeah, we like it that way. That's why we're all here.
Right.
Because I came from New York City.
Oh, yeah.
I was happy to live here because it's not, because it's not exciting. But the challenge has been that when people come from another location, especially we brought in, you know, for a while we had a tough time holding on to part-time officers. Because quite frankly, you know, it's not very exciting.
Right.
Now, obviously there are challenges with everything. But I guess my concern is that coming from a challenging, exciting environment into, you know, Mayberry during the midweek. So, and chief may disagree. But, but I'm saying that, so you feel you're, would it be concerning? I'm concerned you might get bored.
Yeah, well, that's, I appreciate that. And by the way, I'm the hugest Mayberry RFD Andy Griffith fan you'll ever meet. In fact, if I do become chief of police, you will find in my office, I have hand drawings of the Andy Griffith show. I grew up on that.
A good friend of mine actually just moved there and he actually just retired there. And so he loves it.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, I'm not, I'm not demagoguing, man, I'm just.
I think a lot like you said, you left New York City to come out to God's country at a different slower pace. I think that's, not to steal your thunder, but I want to, I want to follow your footsteps a little bit. I'm, the challenge is, the challenge is a challenge. As I mentioned to the chief and to the town administrator last week, when I first began my career as a young twenty-one-year-old police officer, I quickly was known as Officer Friendly. That was the nickname that was given to me in the town. Because I would prefer to ride around for eight to ten hours a day waving at people, stopping off and talking to them on the front porch, in their business rather than I ever would dealing with the true crime, the true policing, what people see on TV. Yeah, that's about this much of what policing is all about. Policing is very simple. Take care of people, take care of problems. The problems might not be New York City-style problems. They might not even be Boston College-type of problems. But to the town of Monterey and to those residents and to those people, that's their problem. And so, no, I think the challenge, I love a challenge. And this would be a challenge. Because the challenge is, is to recognize the ability to maybe grow our department. The town's going to grow. You have opportunity.
A lot of the growth is probably folks that were already up here, coming up here away from COVID. And so they became residents, but they may well, I mean, there are, there were some sales, I don't deny it. But I think that the most of that growth was really the result of people temporarily relocating their residency because of COVID. And they may, they may stay. I was happy to stay here, but I grew up in New York City. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on that as likely outcome. It may occur, but.
I don't necessarily think, I don't necessarily think I'm talking in terms of growth regarding commercial boom. Right? You're not going to have a, you're not going to have a mall. But I'm talking about growth in terms of six hundred calls for service, fifteen percent increase from one year to the next. That says something about the community. That says something about the responsibilities of the police. And that averages about two day, two calls a day. Yeah, okay, that doesn't seem like a lot in comparison. But it's also not just about.
But it's also not just about the relationship or, not relationship, the response to those calls that makes you a police officer or makes you successful. It's about the involvement and the tie-in to the community. And that's what I'm most excited about, is to be that person that can, that can work towards that, continuing to professionalize the department. I think the chief, in my understanding and what I've found, done a tremendous job, tremendous job. We can only continue to grow forward and have to grow forward. If there's the potential for growth and further development, then I think, then that is, that's an exciting opportunity. But I think the most exciting opportunity, most exciting opportunity is getting to become part of this community, understanding the concerns and the challenges that the community might have and working with people to develop a strategy to address that. So in short, no, I'm not gonna get bored because there's a lot of other things that we can do to make, to offset the perception of the need of having to have, you know, car chases and this or that. That's not what policing is about. That's not what I'm about. I'm about public service. I don't shy away, but... I don't shy away from things. But again, I don't, but to answer, no, I'm not gonna get bored. I'm, as I said, I have, I've, the, I was never full of piss and vinegar, to be honest with you. But I believe that the context of what people think policing is about is what people see on cop shows and episodes. And it's not that. It's more, it's more taking care of people, getting to know people and addressing some, the preventive piece, the prevention piece. And that's where I, that's where I find a lot of comfort.
My question though is, is, but it's not based on cop shows, it's based on, we had actual experience where we had, you know, you basically, at one point Monterey was like the training center for South County because we trained part-time police officers and, you know, there was nothing really going on. Then they go, it's, it was actually the, you know, the ability to do more policing, more policing there. I guess, but just to pick up to the point, I do wanna say that there's, there's very limited possibility that Monterey will increase in population, only because there are, we actually don't have any more land, developed of land, with, I mean, with the sole exceptions of maybe one or two. But the challenge is, and to your, to your point, is that the population that is staying here is getting older. And so most of the calls, and I don't know if you've spoken to the fire chief, have you?
I've not spoken to him yet.
Most of the calls now are medical calls and will, it will get, it will get more, it will increase more. That's, I guess, it's probably a blue loan. Just two other things and then I'll move on. You were talking about body cameras. I thought that mandate is part of the police reform.
No, not yet.
Not yet. Okay, but it's, I would assume that it's on its way.
Well, I think if it's on its way, the state's gonna have to come up with some funding for people. And I would certainly argue that with our state representative and our state delegation. If you're gonna make mandates for things, then you can't, you can't put it on the backs of the taxpayers. Again, that's something that needs to be vetted. We would have to evaluate that fairly thoroughly. Again, two, three, four officers, a couple of part-time officers, the totality of costs probably is not astronomical. But again, it's the maintenance and the retention that is, that is the big, the big key, the safeguarding of that. But again, I will also say in a department where you have one, two officers working, one officer really, working at any given time, that provides a huge, not sense of comfort by no stretch of the imagination. But it provides an extra set of eyes for an officer in terms of safety as well as evidentiary tools if something should happen. It certainly also helps run the mitigation of citizen complaints, which is huge because there's no denying what is said or seen on camera. But again, tread lightly and keeping in mind the financial implications of the introduction of that to the community is, would be, would be something that has to be evaluated.
And my last question, it's called, hold it down. Your department in South Carolina and the department in Boston, were either of them unionized?
Boston is unionized, North Carolina, just as a point of clarification. But Boston, yes, unionized. So I have, I do have experience in dealing with associations and union practices and labor issues as well as arbitration.
How do you feel about the unionization of a small town police department? I'm sorry. So obviously, so obviously, I'm now the publics, I'm now the publics. I apologize, again, apologize. That's why you should have called me.
I also forgot you asked you to introduce yourself. No, you might have.
Did I see?
Oh, yeah, he did. No, he did.
Stephen Wise.
He did.
I've not been great about that. No problem. Then I, I certainly apologize, can you, I just, you might have taken it short, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I think that there is, there's pros and cons with it. I think that it would have to be something that would be negotiated through, through the town administrator, through the, through my office. I would, I would also wanna understand the appetite for it and what the expectations are of it. But I think it would come down to, to a very open, frank and public conversation and debate with it. It's not something that I'm gonna just go right in and say, oh yeah, let's do it. No, you gotta tread lightly because there's ramifications and there's things with that that will directly impact the town on an annual basis and there's nothing that you can do to stop it. And, but at the same time, not saying that this would be an opportunity for it, but as you mentioned earlier, to answer your other question about retention, yeah, you're, you know, you're gonna, depends on the quality and the caliber of officers you're finding. If you're hiring young 21-year-old police officers that are right out of academy, yeah. Unless, as I mentioned earlier, unless you're creating an environment where they feel like they're gonna succeed and where they feel like they're getting something from the department and from the community, then yeah, you're gonna lose them. You're gonna lose them to the state police. You're gonna lose them to those big departments, Pittsfield and maybe North Adams and some of these other departments. Because they have, whatever they call the excitement, although, you know, again, I never was like that. But again, I think it's all about the environment in which you create, the culture you create in this department. A department this size, you're able to be very intimate with your officers, meaning you're gonna be, you're gonna be family. It's gonna be family. And every police agency is like that, family. But you're gonna be able to be more family here. And, and I think that the relationship, the communication, the collaboration is gonna be a key for that because you're gonna be able to, as all, create something that everybody will be able to see that they had a hand in on. And I think that excites some people. And I also, because of my experience and across the Commonwealth, I know a lot of folks. And I know a lot of folks that if push comes to shove, I would pick up the phone and say, hey, what do you think about making a move? Because I know the caliber of officer you're gonna get. I have the ability to outreach and recruit through my connections and be able to bring some good quality people as well, if need be. Ultimately, I'd like to retain what we have and build them up, develop them. But at the same time, probably doesn't wanna be heard, but I'm gonna just be honest, we also have to, we also have to support that growth as a town. We have to be able to support development of our staff, giving them the tools and supporting their professional development and growth to retain and to keep people. I'm sure the chief will be the first to tell you, no one likes losing a good officer to another department. No one likes taking the time to train, you know, 12, 16 weeks, whatever it is, it's between six and 12 weeks of FTO school, FTO training to then, a year from now, move on. So there's other ways to do it. I'm sure the chief has already utilized, the town has already utilized retention measures. Say, all right, we're gonna hire you, you're gonna, you're gonna sign a contract and you're gonna work with us for X number of years. That's something I would introduce. You wanna, you wanna come to work, then I wanna, we're gonna keep you for a little bit. We're gonna keep you for, and maybe during that timeframe, they, they find fond of it. Listen, I'm here because, not out of a whim, I'm here because I've done my research. I've taken the time to come two hours several times before this last two weeks' process to make sure that this community is a good fit for me. If I didn't think it was a good fit for me, I wouldn't be sitting here. Because I wouldn't waste any one of these folks' time. It's not about my time, it's about them. And, and I think that's what, you talk, going back to your first question about being bored, being, you know, not challenged up. I've, I've done reading, I've done my, there's some challenges that the town has and we can...
Can you give me an example?
Well, I think again...
And let me be frank here. Yeah, what do you think is the biggest challenge? I'm sorry, did we already say, did you already go through this as well?
Yeah, we are. It's just, we're running behind schedule and we're running really behind schedule now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we should, we should, we should move on.
Sure.
Sorry to cut you off.
No problem, no problem.
Was a really good question, but yeah.
All right, thank you for joining us. Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time and your thorough...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great afternoon.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
Pleasure, pleasure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're gonna go get Brian?
You wanna follow him out?
What?
You wanna follow him and ask him questions?
Gotta come back and ask you a question.
Well, actually, there's one question I wanna ask him, but...
Don't go ask him. Bring back the intro. Was a good question, but... Yeah.
He's already gonna answer.
True.
I like the, only so far.
Did Paulis go get Brian?
Brian. There's the binder for Brian.
Yep.
I already threw it already, so... Sure is. I don't think I saw the letters of rent.
So were you in on the first series of interviews?
No, so...
Ah, okay. So why, why are we having a second set of interviews?
I signed in for the chief with Brian, but there were only two of them.
This is your first time around?
Yeah, it wasn't just you. It wasn't just all three of you, Scott.
Thank you. I didn't think of that.
Sure, me as well.
Yeah.
Ryan.
I didn't get to see that one.
Sorry, I'm running behind schedule.
It's okay. Thank you for joining us.
So, hey, why are you...
I'm good, thank you.
Good to see you.
Hey, Brian.
Feeling better, I hope?
Yeah, I feel great. You're here just for me today, so.
Hardly.
Thanks for coming back. You're doing it a second time.
Yeah, let's do it again. Sergeant Thaddeus, so thank you for joining us. And we've been present on Monterey Police Force for many years and you're applying for the police chief position. We have cover letter, resume, many recommendations. Do you want to, start off just by expanding, I mean, I think we all know Brian?
Yeah.
From many years, why, you know, you want to apply for the chief position? And then we can get into questions.
Well, I just, I think this is a next step in my career. I've been a police officer for 20 years, just about. You know, I've been here for five, I know the community, you know, I'm ready to work with the population. You know, I've created these ties with the community that, you know, I just love being with the community. I'd wanna stay here. I have probably 10 years left till I retire and I'd like to do that time here. And chief retiring, I think this is just the next step for me to serve the town.
Do you, do you, either of you have...
First, relax.
Yeah.
What did he say?
Yeah.
Take a breath.
I will. Need a couple minutes.
And I think one thing is, you know, we've been going through some of the issues in Monterey and you're very familiar with what, with what the problems are in Monterey. Yeah, I would be, I'm curious, I guess, to hear how you think the solutions to the problems might change if you were chief. So you, people speed on 23 and other roads. I know that we have the flashing signs.
Right.
There's officers who do traffic patrol. Do you think the traffic patrol in particular or speeding, you know, taking care of speeding, is my understanding these, the speed devices give you back data?
Yeah, so we can, we can get data from that. It'll tell you exactly when the hot spots are, how many cars are going through there per day, you know, what was the highest speed there during the day? What was the lowest speed? It'll, it'll give you numbers on that item.
Is that something that you download from each machine?
Right now, right now, we pay for a service for that. So it's all, it goes into the cloud and then we can pull it down anywhere we're at, anywhere on this laptop or maybe pull it up on your phone.
So when that is active, that's automatically sending and receiving?
Yeah, so there's, there's always that information out there.
So do you think that this, what, you know, the current policies and, and way that speeding and traffic violations are dealt with would stay the same? Or would you envision any changes if you were to become chief as to, you know, officers out patrolling and issuing speeding violation tickets and the speed signs? Because I know we have seen some changes even in the past couple of years, right? We have new speed signs. Do you think, I don't know if you, would that number stall? Do you think that those are effective at limiting speeding? Would you envision having more of those?
Yeah, no, I do think that they are effective. Just at the town beach, I've been sitting there, you know, sometimes I could tuck in behind cars and no one could see me there. And I could tell just, just by the signs that people have slowed down since they've been installed. And they can be moved around too. There's one out on Blueville Road and it's, the way that it's in the ground, it's, you could move it to a different area if you wanted to. Say we're having trouble on a different, different section of road, we could install it there. Cause they're, they're solar, there's batteries inside, so. There's one up on that end of town that sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. I think it's probably reaching the end of its lifespan.
By the old school.
Yeah. So, you know, and that one's actually hardwired into the school, I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, the septic. I think it was, it was wired into the septic years and years ago. And, but, I mean, that's not the problem. I just think that the actual, you know, it's popped out. So, yeah. But, you know, we could, we could eventually take that one out on Blue Hill and put it there. I'd like to have both new ones going into the center of town.
And we have a trailer as well. Are you, a speed trailer? And is that shared?
Nope, that's ours. And we can, we can put that anywhere we want in town as well. We can find a good level of surface for that. Yeah, as far as speeding goes, I think we do a pretty good job and, you know, a lot of times just sitting in the center of town helps. People see the crews are sitting there, they slow down and just moving around town, getting the officers out, sitting. There's a few hotspots, 23, you know, straightaways down, going down by Otis. People can pick up speed there. So just keep knowing what we're doing. The officers are doing a good job out there on the weekends and stuff.
So you've been here five years and I, I know that Garrett's sitting back there. But, you know, rising to a leadership position, we would expect that you have some type of vision. So I'd like you to talk to us about what you think we've been doing well, but also what you think are things that you'd like to change and how you would go about phasing those in. Like, give us your vision, your leadership. Where would you take us?
I think going forward, I think officer retention is gonna be like, like very, very big for us. You know, we have a good group of people that we have working for us and we need to hang on to them. So... So, I'd like to be more involved with them. And, you know, when I, the shift that I'm proposing going forward is I'm gonna have an overlapping shift with, with them. Probably two hours. And in those two hours, I can sit with them, I can train with them and, and, uh, go over certain things. My expectations of what I want to do for the week, stuff like that. Uh, I would also, you know, I'd like to see the department become accredited, which is gonna be like, a pretty big task going forward, but I think it's, it's, it's the way of the future. We've gotta, we've gotta do that. If not accredited, at least certified, which is, is one, one step below being accredited. But, but once you get certified, it's, it's not difficult to, to get to that accreditation.
Is, uh, Sheffield, uh, certified or accredited?
The only department that is certified or accredited down here is Great Barrington.
What does that status mean to the average person?
To the average person, it's... It, no, it's, the people in town say, they can say that, that their police department is basically squared away. That, you know, we have certain rules and standards that we have to, we have to apply to. And, um, you know, it, it's something to be proud of. Maybe not every citizen will say, you know, oh, that's great, but what does that mean? You know, but, uh, it, it, to us, it's, uh...
Is it a source of pride for the officers? And, and if, if not, that's okay. But if, if so, at all the other towns, yeah, just feeling all these towns where they're not accredited?
I think it's, it's more of a, it's a leadership thing. The, the, the leaders will say, well, my, my police department's accredited. Uh, you know, I don't know if the guys are, are as appreciative as, as maybe the sergeants and the, you know, the town administrators, uh, support members, the chiefs, the chiefs, right? But, but it is a, a standard that all departments should strive for. It's just, um, there's a lot of checks and balances to, to make sure that your department is, is running up to, to speed with policies and procedures. That you can't run off the policies and procedures from two thousand. Everything's gonna be updated to, to today's policies and procedures, you know, the full new police reform bill.
Are those standards that are already preset that you would have to come up to?
There are, yeah, there are, we just need to go through them.
And they change yearly, just like the...
They do.
Just like building codes?
Right, and, you know, some are actually are, are in law now. So like, you know, you have to, um, there's a duty, a duty to react now. You see an officer and he's doing something wrong. It's law now that if an officer sees that, he has to react and, and say, you know, pull him off, whoever, or whatever. So, some are law and some policies just really need to be updated. They're out there, mass chiefs, um, has, has all policies in the state. You just have to look at them and curtail them to your town. But, um, the accreditation process, they'll say, okay, you have to do this, you have to do that, you just have to conform.
Besides policies and procedures, what other things would need to be changed to reach accreditation status?
Um, there's, there's building, um, building modifications or, or they, they give waivers and stuff to it. If you're building that, can't do something. Like, all jail cells must have this, running water, this, that, and the other. And if you don't have those kind of facilities, they'll give you a waiver for that, so you don't have to, that doesn't...
That's a flex.
Right.
So, on the topic of, uh, you mentioned the new duty to respond, duty to...
Duty of being?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, you've been a senior officer in Sheffield and a sergeant in Monterey. So, you've had people, to some degree, under your supervision. Have you ever witnessed personally, you know, excessive use of force? Or another, you know, poor conduct on, on behalf of another police officer? And how have you responded? And if you haven't, what would you do in a situation like that? It sounds like now the law requires you to do something. But that sounds like that's duty of any officer as, in a leadership role, what would you do?
Right.
If you were confronted, you know, with an officer mis...
Right. Yeah, it, it, it's funny, I did go on a call in Sheffield where that did happen. And, um, you, you know, I just removed the officer from the situation, cause it, it could have gotten out of hand. And so, this and this was before the law was even, I just said, hey, man, like, just, you need to come over here. You know, these people over here, let me talk to this person over here, just... And, um, you know, how you talk to people can go a long way. So, I, I have a, a calming way to talk to suspects or, or individuals or whatever, where, you know, some people might not. Where I have to say, they just have to sign. And, uh, at the time, I had told the senior officer, I just said, hey, just so you know, this guy's doing this. Maybe you wanna chat with him. And that was it. Yeah, nowadays, it's, it's probably more paperwork involved.
When we spoke previously, you also mentioned something about, forgetting for not remembering the correct acronym. But, um, the system that logs, um, calls and regionalization?
Right. Yes.
Remind me what that thing is actually called?
So, um, going forward, I, I would like to, and I, I still wanna have to talk to the chief. I'd like to put this in the budget this year. I want to switch over our IMC to Berkshire County, um, IMC. It's, it's, it's just a, it's the operating system that we run off of. And Berkshire County operates their own IMC. But they also operate, they operate Sheffield's IMC. They, so they operate all the area towns, basically, except for us. And, um, they pick up the cost of the licensing fees. And, um, there will be an initial cost to take all of our information. Cause anytime I ever deal with you or you write, write a citation, it goes into this, this system. And everything is integrated. So, the initial cost is taking every single person that we've dealt with, for however long we've had IMC, ten or fifteen, maybe twenty years, and then converting it all up to, to Fitzfield. So they have all of our, which, which is important when, any, when you're dealing with officer safety or, you know, say there's a warrant out for somebody in Monterey. So everybody has that information.
So, we would have access to information of what's going on in the town?
In other towns, any CS, any, any person that Sheffield has dealt with? Or, um, wherever, anywhere that uses the IMC system will have access to, to everything.
So at what point do you learn that there's a warrant out for someone in Monterey? Would that be when you stop them and have their license number shown, or you, no, in advance?
So warrants are, are put into, uh, uh, into the registry. So if I run your car, it's gonna come up that you have a warrant. Will it? I didn't know that. It, it will, yes.
If you have it.
But I have a warrant. If you have. If you have. Or whoever. Yeah. So, um...
We're going way now.
But the IMC system is, is, is different than the, the registered warrant vehicle system. It's, it's, it's more information than, than just car stuff. You know, um, say we go to a domestic on, you know, one twenty-three Oak Street. And, you know, we have information that, that we've been there four previous times. Now say, say New Marlboro has to come and help mutual aid. He doesn't have access to, to the four prior ones. Do you know what I mean? Cause we're not, we're not meshed together. Same with, same with us, with them. You know, so, and plus it's gonna be a cost savings thing too. I- i- in the first year, it's, it is gonna cost a little bit more to integrate. But going forward, the licensing fees, right now, we put the bill for that. Going forward, Berkshire County's going to do that. So the sheriff's department will do that.
So speaking of mutual aid, uh, I know that from your resume that you, you know, worked in Marlboro when the police chief, uh, was injured.
Yeah.
And do you feel that from your time in Monterey and Sheffield, you have good relationships with the surrounding towns, chiefs and officers? And, and from the mutual aid that you have responded to or, or, or participated in? How has that gone? And what does it mean to you that, you know, when one police chief and a neighbor in town was injured, you were able to go and, and step in and, and cover for the town and working together?
Um, well, like with Paul, I've worked with Chief Story for almost my whole career. You know, we've, we've always worked together, like back when we were both working midnights and stuff. We always go and help each other out. With Grant Frank, the chief of the Marlboro, I, I trained him. I trained Chief Munson in Sheffield. I, I, I think I have a pretty good relationship with every chief around. That's why I thought it was important to get their support, um, you know, when applying.
When you, when you did cover for Grant, uh, was it mostly as a, uh, traffic detail and the officer on a call? Were there any leadership responsibilities that came along?
So, no, basically when, when, um, I was working every Monday over there while he, he was recovering. And, um, that was just to help out, I was just basically patrolling for, for that one day. So it was an extra, an extra shift a week. And there were a couple guys, I think Mike Olditt, uh, from Sheffield took a few shifts a week. And a couple other guys, you know, just to cover while he's gone. But that's the kinda stuff that we do for each other around here. And I would expect that he would do the same for me if something were to happen like that here.
How do you view, you know, community policing is like the watchword these days, but...
Yeah.
Just talk about how you feel that applies to this community and your role?
Well, I, I, I mean, community policing, like, I was always, I was in the community policing before it was community policing. I just, I've always had like strong connections with the town. And I, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm a regular guy, I'm from town. You know, I have a lot of friends that are outside of police work. Community policing to me is, is going downtown and, and, you know, seeing people. And saying, hey, you know, like Kay Priscilla, hey Kay, how are ya? How's everything, how, how've you been, how's the family? You know, just knowing everyone in town and having them know me. You know, same with my officers, I want them, I want my officers to work the boot pantry and say, hey, how are ya? Help out and do whatever. Uh, but that's, that's the kinda department we are. We're a small town department, um, doing community things to help, help everyone. We're all here, we're all here together, so.
On that topic, um, you're familiar, well, I am not familiar, that many of the police calls are for, you know, senior citizens. And sometimes, um, you know, you may be called into a well-being check. What, how, when you go into a well-being check and, you know, a senior citizen who isn't picking up the phone or anybody, what kinda things are you looking for, uh, and what kinda mindset do you have going into that? In terms of maybe calling EMS or, you know, after the call, what, what, uh...
Um, well, I mean, it, it all depends, you have to take in, take in everything, or the, or the newspapers pile it up. You know, this person always check in at night, you know? My, I always call my daughter at nine o'clock at night or something like that. You know, she never called tonight. And you just have to take everything into consideration. And, uh, before you do anything. And, and I think we talked briefly last year about doing something. I would like to get with, with the council on aging and, and get a list of maybe some seniors that, you know, that wanna stay home, uh, but still need checking up on, stuff like that. And, um, you know, that's, that's the type of thing that, that we need to, to do around here. With our aging population, check in, check in with these seniors. You know, I've shovel driveways and walkways for people. If I go on a call and it's a snowstorm, sometimes I'll do that for, for an elderly person. Cause, you know, that's what we do. That's all part of the community policing.
So, what, what would you envision a, a program like that to look like? Would it be like a weekly check-in? Would, would it be the same officer every week? Uh, just like what would the logistics? Like, once you have a list now of people trying to be checked in, how would you go about?
Yeah. I guess I'd have to get with, with council on aging and, and find out what their needs are. So, you know, because there's some people that don't want you to do that. They're independent and they don't want people checking up on them. But, uh, you know, there's some of the people that appreciate it, they just want somebody to talk. But, you know, maybe that once a week or, or maybe somebody that's in need a little bit more. But, I, I think I would start with, with, um, council on aging first. Find out who needs what.
Any questions?
Not for me. Um, firearms. Uh, I, I'm of the understanding that you're actually the one doing the firearms training for officers now. What kind of experience and, you know, certification do you have? And, you know, what, when you're training people on firearms? You know?
Right. Uh, so I went to, uh, I guess it was a, uh, forty-hour, um, firearms course, I mean, the MBTC, a few years ago. And, um, so our firearms are, we have to do them once a year. So, once a year you have to qualify. And then at another time during the year, you have to, you know, do some sort of other, um, training. Either use of force or, um, some sort of firearms training. Again, sometimes we'll do like a night fire or, um, we'll sit down and, and clean the weapons and discuss certain, certain things that were in the news and, and do that kinda training. So, yeah, I, I've been, I've been shooting guns since I was eighteen years old, when I was doing the army. It wasn't until, actually until Chief Backus had sent me to, to firearm school. But I've always, I've always, um, you know, done the in-service.
How do you think that your experience, um, and time in the army, you know, translates into being a police officer? And does it translate all into leadership? You know, because, you know, the police chief role is, is a, is a leadership and management of other people as much as it...
Right.
Being a police officer?
You know, when I was, uh, twenty, twenty-three or twenty-four years old, I was promoted to sergeant in the army. And I was a, a team leader for ten people. And, um, so I've been a sergeant in doing this for twenty years. So I, I've, I've done it. I, I've been a leader. I feel like I was well-respected, you know, we, um, you're not gonna make you a sergeant in the military if, if they don't think you can do it. So, we, I was sergeant, ten-man, ten-manned team. And we were deployed overseas for over a year. We were those ten guys. And, um, we had a successful mission, we came home and everything worked out. And so, you know, that, I feel like that directly translates to, to the job that I do here. And, and how I, I treat the officers that, that work for me. So, if I treat them good, they're gonna treat me good. They're gonna, if I, if I'm good to them, they're gonna take care of me. They're gonna make the department look good, they're gonna make the town look good. And, and I would never throw them into anything that I don't think that I would do. You know, if I'm... You know, if I want them to, to write more tickets or be out there and do more stuff, then I'll be out there with them too. You know, the speed trailer, and it's kind of a pain in the butt to set up and stuff. I, I wouldn't tell them to go do it. I, I would do it myself or I'd do it with them, you know.
Speaking to retention of officers, do you have any creative ideas about how to retain officers that maybe haven't been tried in Monterey before? Or what do you think is most important? You've seen, and I forget whether it was formally in your cover letter, we just talked about it, but before you got here, we went through a lot of officers all the time. And then, you know, it's been more steady in the past few years. What do you think works for retaining officers? And is there anything that you would change, uh, in order to retain your officers? As well as with this bridge
Right.
training going on, I think that, how would you deal with that?
You, you know, I think before I got here, uh, you know, we did go through quite a few officers. And it's all, it's all how you treat somebody. If you, if you treat somebody poorly, they're not, you know, what's, what's their incentive to, to come back? When, when it's so competitive out there? And all these different towns out here are operating so much, you know? And you're gonna treat them like, treat them bad, what's, why, why are they gonna stay? You know, so it, it all starts there. So, you, but you gotta have a good, a good balance package. You gotta take care of them too, on, on that end. But training, you have, you know, if, if an officer comes to you and says, hey, I wanna do, I wanna go to firearms training, cause that's, that's a big one. A lot of guys wanna, wanna go to that. You know, give them the trainings that they want. Give them the trainings that they need. You know, I'm not gonna send them to, you know, defensive driving instructor school, you know, because that's not a need that we need here. But, uh, yeah, give them the trainings that they want. More trainings, the better. Especially today, it's a huge, you gotta have a good trained police department.
What kind of trainings would you see as being most critical for our community?
Uh, you know, when you go through the police academy, they teach you how to, you know, protect if somebody's dropping. You know, that's, that can be a perishable skill. You know, some, you know, I've been doing this for twenty years. You know, maybe I could use a refresher. And there's, there's a lot of good classes out there, especially now with, with the availability of marijuana and stuff. There's different tests now for, for drunk, drunk and drunk driving. So, yeah, that, that would be a, a great one. There's a accident, you know, reconstruction class you could send someone to. A lot, a lot of our stuff revolves around, um, motor vehicle stuff. But there's, there's a lot of stuff that has to do with elder care too. There's a lot of trainings like that. Those, a lot of, uh, social work classes you can send guys to. The escalation training, that's huge, like, you know. Anytime you go into a domestic situation, you always wanna like calm things down. So, if you get some hothead going in there who hasn't really maybe had the training to, to cool things down, then he might have a problem, so. And there's, and, and MBTC is offering lots and lots and lots of stuff out there, so. And, and a lot of it's free. It's free training. It's all you have to pay for the time, so.
I didn't realize it was free. That's awesome news. And maybe working with people that are in mental health crisis?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's another big one. That's huge today. Just knowing how to respond and what you should do and maybe different resources you could call. You know, you go on call and somebody's in mental health crisis. Sometimes being a cap isn't, isn't always the best option, you know. A lot of times at Gould Farm, if there's a medical call, a lot of times they don't want the cops to come. So, we'll just go and kinda hang out outside and, you know, just wait. If they need us, we'll go in. If not, we'll attack them, so.
You look like you're having a serious consideration of what they're saying.
Everything's serious.
I know.
To some degree. So, uh, I mean, I've known you for five years. Never once through my windshield or through my window, so I'm appreciative of that. I drive like my dad anyway, so, um, you getting pulled over would be the last thing I would ever expect. Because of the fact that I drive so slow. But, uh, people that I've talked to have appreciated you for your mannerisms. And I think that speaks volumes to your personality and to the chief for having recruited you and for the town to have been able to maintain your professionalism and your service to our town. So, that much I would say is, um, is, um, indebted to that for you. Thank you so much. I'll say that. Um, I have nothing negative to add to, to any of that. Do you foresee that the, that the police department now is, um, properly staffed? Is, I mean, not, not properly, like there's a problem. Enough coverage, enough people.
Yes, I think for right now, we're, we're, uh, right where we need to be.
Okay. I asked about the courts throwing out, lowering, apparently not really seeming to take into consideration the time that it would take to stop somebody during a speeding check going through the hazards of such a, of a pull over. The potential problems that you could reach just talking to the person in the car. You never know who you're pulling over.
Sure.
And then having a speeding ticket reduced to foolishness or released completely. How would you try to make changes to the courts or the magistrate to, to make them see that, that when an officer comes before the court with a violation, that that should be looked at with utmost care and, and not say, okay, well, now it's not worth the court's time.
Right.
And release, release that. How does that, how does that make you feel when that happens? And when you do get that feeling, if it's frustration, what do you say to yourself as you're leaving? How would you change that or how would you at least try to implement change throughout the Southern Berchtesh? Let's just leave it at a, at a, at a local level.
Right. Um, I, I think if there were extraordinary circumstances where you feel, or I feel that, um, somebody needs to be held accountable, you can, i- if the magistrate were to know that, you could, you could always appeal to a judge. And then, and then go to the judge and plead your case there. But a lot of times you can, you can work with the magistrate and, um, plead your case with them. And, and a lot of times they're receptive to, to it. Because it, you know, the person doing the driving who got the citation, they get to plead their case too. So, you know, a lot of times it's, it's the justice system. It's, it's how, you know, sometimes you win some, sometimes you lose some. But if, if you feel, if you feel strongly enough about something, there's, there's avenues you can take. And a lot of times the, the magistrate will work with you. Say, hey, let's say that, this guy was doing this and I really appreciated it. You know, we can, we can hold them accountable for this.
Would, would you take the course of action, perhaps, get together with your local chiefs of police to apply more pressure upon them to stop the, at least the initial releasing of, of, of a good percentage of what goes before them?
Right. Yeah, so, um, every month, the Western Mass Chiefs, they all meet and they discuss, I guess it's a round table and they all go around and discuss things and we could bring that up and, um...
Cause I would assume that it irritates.
Oh, yeah, it does. It does.
I mean, it's, it's wasting
If you go in there
resources and time.
If you go in there and you, so you have ten tickets, you know, for a thousand dollars. And then when you leave for, they only end up being responsible for say a hundred. That's, yeah, that's, that's frustrating. It is frustrating. Yeah. Um, yeah, talking with the chiefs of police and getting, getting, uh, I guess Chief Wynn is probably the head of, the head of Western Mass Chiefs. And, and getting them to write a letter to, to the court and, you know, put a little pressure on them that way.
Well, as you might guess, that's like the problem I have with general public is that they're going way too fast.
Right.
Ninety percent of all accidents are caused by excessive speed.
Right.
And too many people are driving too fast. I used to love going through South Egremont.
Right.
I know some people don't. I thought it was great.
Right.
When you hit South Egremont, you stepped on the brake.
Twenty, I think.
And you kept it that way until you got by the cop horse and then you picked up the speed.
Right.
I always wanted Monterey to be that town, but of course, it didn't quite fit the fruition.
Right.
Um, but that's, that's just what I believe in. Uh, you know, and there, again, that's my dad speaking through me.
Right.
And I'm speaking through him, I guess. Cause he always believed that if you're in such a hurry, you should have left earlier.
Right.
Slow down.
Right.
Don't fool around.
Well, that's okay too. I mean, that's something that we can work on. You know, I mean, you guys tell me what you want and, and I'll make it happen.
Has it been a problem? I mean, are, are a lot of speeding
Do you drive through Monterey?
No, no, not whether people are speeding, whether the magistrate's wrong or not.
Yes.
That's the part I don't know.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, if I had a blue light on my car, I don't think I'd even get to work. I mean, people are either, I saw, I got a newspaper the other day. Didn't even have it in front of me. Most people seem to be in your lane and you're going way too fast.
I, I have no doubt. That part I know. It's the other side I don't know.
Yeah, I also understand how hard it is to educate the public. Because everybody who comes through is a new face, you know, so you, right. But what, what was good about everyone is that people even from away, they knew. They knew. It's just like, this is one idiot, don't do what I do. So, I'm not saying that, you know, and that's my, one of my questions.
I, I have a weird one, but, you know, maybe not that weird. I mean, I know that we're gonna have an increasing number of accidents. Like, we, we had a terrible storm this past spring. But just from your five years of experience, where, what do you think are most likely to be in the next five years, things we'll see that are weather, storm related, that would be issues for the police? That we'd have to be thinking about and planning for?
Well, I, I remember a few years ago, we had Hurricane Irene and we had Hurricane Sandy. And they came through and they wreaked havoc in Sheffield. And there were some neighborhoods where people couldn't get out of their houses because there were so many trees down, uh, roadways, um. And, and, I mean, I don't think this year was as active as years past, but I, I think we're not seeing an increase in hurricanes. And we're not immune from that. Plus with the tornadoes that we, I guess we had two, two back in the nineties here. You know, we're not immune from, from that kind of stuff, but I think we're gonna see a lot more of it too. So, um, yeah, that's, that's something we can work with, with Mass Emergency Management and EMA. I'll get with the fire chief and the emergency manager in town here, um, to discuss, you know, that kind of stuff. How, how our response is gonna be.
Where the problems are.
Right.
I think we had that emergency plan
Yeah.
years ago, it was implemented, I think.
Right.
As to where the problems would become. The dam, the dam behind here. You know, different locations down, I mean, Brian's farm, the locations at crossroads, flats.
Actually, just, my husband just saw in the paper that the dam up here is actually listed as a potential problem. Um, for Bercher County. Did you catch that?
No.
Not Bear Town? Uh, not Bear Town. The, the Bennettville.
Yeah.
Not Bennettville. Brewer.
Brewer, right. Yes, thank you.
Not this dam?
The one that was listed was, was Brewer.
This dam is considered to be up, up
Doesn't count.
Yeah, it's beyond, it's on past the
It's not a dam anymore. It's just a, a thing.
One question is body cameras. Do you have a perspective on, you know, whether that's a good thing to implement? Or, you know, if the state requires it, we'll do it. But other than that, I mean, do you have any thoughts on body cameras?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for body cameras. I think, uh, I think it helps protect the officer. It helps protect, um, the citizen. You know, it's good for evidence. You know, you stop a guy for, for speeding or drunk driving or something like that. You know, it's, it's, it's all right there. That fellow over when he got that guy out of the car, poured himself out of the car. It's just all the evidentiary properties, so it's there. You know, there's gonna be money out there. Grant money's out there for that. We're a small department, so I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna be that much money to get us where we need to be. Maybe, maybe three cameras. I think the storage is probably, you know, the biggest cost. But like I said, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it possibly negligible for us.
But it's something that you would like to see?
I would like to see.
If it was available to you or financially prudent for the town?
Yeah, no, I'm all for it. I, um, if the public wants it, they wanna see what we do. They want accountability for, for things and I, I think it's a good idea. Protect everyone.
Do, do you see any other equip, I'll call it equipment needs, but on officer, vehicle, whatever? Like, what other stuff do you think would help the police in Monterey do their jobs safely? And, and you can't say you think you got it all, but that's okay, but...
As far as equipment goes, I think we're, we're doing good. As far as, well, switching over to that IFC is, is important to me. But other than that, maybe researching, um, a standalone police department or some sort of, uh, space that's better equipped to be a police department.
Physical location.
Right. So, whether that's, that's the basement where, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of work down there, but just see if it's feasible. And, and if we were to put a police station down there, you know, there's work. But not only are you building a police department, you're still taking care of the town hall that is gonna need improvements and, um...
For your office too.
Right. And, and that's a, that's a big office in there. You know, and, and everything downstairs is, that's wasted, wasted space, really. You know, some storage here and there, a bunch of stuff rolling around. So, yeah, I mean, also would it put us down there? I, I think when I first got here, I arrested somebody and, uh, and I had to bring him to the town hall. And so, you bring this person with handcuffs to the town hall. I mean, that's kind of demeaning for whoever, whoever I had to arrest, but...
And would you bring them to Great Barrington if they had to? Do we have an agreement?
So, we have an agreement with Great Barrington right now. And I, we pay them per person, which is, is good. It's, it's their credit and, you know, it's, we just transfer, transfer control of that person to them. And usually if they have court the next morning, they'll spend the night there or, you know, say So, say they're arrested on like a Saturday and they have to spend the night in, like, a couple nights in jail. Great Barrington's not gonna hold them, so then we have to run them to the jail. Which can be, can be a nightmare because it's up by the mall. So, you know, in that case, we would say to, whatever neighbor and agency would just say, hey, I gotta run prisoner to, to the jail. Can you, can you watch it now for me? And they'll, they'll do that for us.
Rather than do the transfer?
Well, if they have to spend more than one night, you know, cause court here is Mondays and Thursdays. So, if you have an arrest on a Friday night, Great Barrington's not gonna hold the guy for a couple nights. If they're not getting bailed. A lot of times they'll get bailed that night. Or if, if something serious happens and they need to be held for a few days, then, then you have to take them up to the jail.
Those are every arresting town's responsibility to make that transfer rather than a cooperative transfer throughout the county.
Now, once you've written.
Something to look into to try to maybe find a, a methodology that each town doesn't now have to take its own individual cruiser out of its own town to, and one of its officers to transport someone, like an ambulance, like a tri-city ambulance will pick up anybody anywhere.
I guess, but you could, but then you're, you're working in, now, say you were approached the sheriff and say, hey, is this something that you can provide? You're gonna end up paying him, and they're gonna do it for free.
Understandable that it's in some town's budget.
Right.
But it could also be in every town's budget where it's cooperative amount of money that's raised for that purpose.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could explore. I, I don't know if the sheriff's department has the kind of staff and whether it's, say, hey, you guys need to send someone to Monterey, pick up somebody, you know, maybe it can be done. Yeah.
But it's another avenue that could possibly look into.
Something we could look into, you know, just the, the way it's always been done, if that were the case. And it's very rare that you'll make an arrest that they're not getting bailed out. So you, you have a, a few different bail clerks, you'll call them up, you get a guy for drunk driving. They're not gonna hold the guy for drunk driving unless he either kills somebody or it's like the seventh time he's done it. They're not gonna hold anyone for that. So almost everyone gets released right away.
Um, so you've been in town for five years. I think everyone respects your calm demeanor. You're usually straight, a bit straightforward. What, just to sum up, like what would change if, and you already have a leadership role within the police department as sergeant. What would change with Brian Fahey as chief of Monterey Police Department? Uh, or would think most would stay the same?
Um, if there is any change, I want it to be slow. I don't want it to implement out crazy. We're, we're just gonna keep, keep it the way it is and kind of, kind of progress forward a little bit. Like I said, I wanna update all the policies and go through all the policies and procedures and just kind of move the department into the 21st century, sort of.
Further along than it is now.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the answer.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't perceive any, any drafts and changes. I do wanna do more community stuff, um, you know, I like doing stuff for the holidays. I like doing, like we're doing things for the kids on, on Halloween and I'd like to, to expand that, you know, Sheffield does this big, uh, Trump or Tree and, and hundreds and hundreds of cars go there now. I'd like to do something, maybe get through the library and do something with them, because I know a lot of kids do the library thing during, during that. Maybe, um, doing, uh, like a Toys for Tots, those kind of community things, you know, the, the social media, get the social media going, you know, people love the social media, so.
These have to be people that don't get it enough.
I know, some people, some people, um, aren't quite tuned into that, but there are a lot of people that are. And even a lot of older people are on Facebook and stuff and, you know, they, they keep an eye out for all that stuff.
So, and, and one thing, I don't think I see on your resume, but you've been part of Cops for Kids.
Cops for Kids?
When you were in Sheffield?
Yeah, I looked that up.
Yeah, so I did, uh, Cops for Kids for, for years. Uh, would you ever see anything? You know, I don't think, we don't have as many kids as Sheffield and Sheffield is the center of the school district.
Right.
But, you know, you had that experience in Sheffield, do you think there could be something along those lines in Monterey or?
Yeah, so my first year here, um, because when we did Cops for Kids, we had, uh, like Chris Pellestrough and, uh, you know, Graham Frank, all the area departments had one officer there. So when I came over here, um, Chief Monson said, hey, do you wanna do Cops for Kids this year? So I, the first year here, I did it. They haven't done it for a couple of years over there because of COVID. I think this next summer, they are gonna do it again. And, you know, we could do that because it's a free camp and it's for all Bercher County kids. So if any kid, we had a lot of kids from Monterey, all the Sawyer kids went there, um, it's all the rise. Yeah.
There were more kids on this year's list than I remember.
But.
But this year there was more.
I don't know.
From school, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the kids in town, they might not even know that that's available to them. So, you know, that's something we can, we can get together with them and do, send an officer over there and send one of, one of our officers over there for the week and, um, you know, that's, that's, that's good stuff. That's good community stuff. Get our kids over there, free, free camp for the week. Cause camps are lots of money nowadays. Send your, send your kid away for camp for a week.
That's not just for kids to attend too, right? Kids can be mentors there too, the teenagers, right?
Yes, the, the older kids, they, they grow, if they've been at a camp for three or four years, their last couple of years, they become mentors and they build away kids up on the rocks and stuff. Yeah, so it's a, it's a good, it's good for the kids, helps, um, build leadership qualities and the older kids there too.
Nancy, are there any closing questions, comments?
Did I just see any question already?
No, we didn't ask back.
Oh, okay, so I have a question.
Well, it's an important, it's an important question.
Yeah, sure. How do you, uh, do you feel that the, um, how do you feel about the, the possibility of, of a union policing in Monterey?
A police union?
And if you haven't given it any thought, you can say that. Do you think it's necessary?
I, I don't think it's necessary. Um, I think there's certain things in the employee handbook that, you know, um, are really, uh, relatable to police, you know, um, but I, I don't think we're, I don't think we need a union, you know, I'm, yeah.
Have you talked about those things, take a turn? Because we are redoing the employee handbook. This would be the ideal opportunity to bring those things up and make sure that, that any issues you have
Right.
are addressed because we are literally redoing.
I think there's certain things that, that need to be spelled out just for police officers because we don't do the same job as the highway department. So, uh, and I, you know, I gotta talk with the chief if, if, um, if policies and procedures, our policies and procedures actually supersede the employee handbook or what's the scoop with that? Because, you know, I know we just signed a sexual harassment form, but we also have a policy to proceed there in the police department for sexual harassment. You know, it's probably very similar, but, um, those are, those are the type of things we need to, to go through. Yeah, yeah, I'd love to be part of that, to do that.
The only other thing I was gonna say is, can you describe your relationship with the, with the fire department? As, I mean, um, and.
Yeah, oh, we get along really good. I, I get along with those guys great. Um, you know, we worked hand in hand on a lot of things and, you know, we go on a certain call to get, uh, together, a medical call and they're the, um, subject matter experts. I, I'll defer to them. Uh, so yeah, I get on really well with them.
I think that's one of the, one of the things that have really come better and better and better with each passing year. It's a coordination, you know, I mean, you know, the, the involvement between the police department and firefighting you have around, you know.
Yeah.
It's better to be closer than previous years.
I think a lot of police and fires, some friction there and stuff, you know, we're better than you guys, that type of thing, but not here. It's, we get along really good. All the officers are too small, we're big cats, stuff like that, you know, we, we get off really well together.
The last question is, I didn't get to ask it last, but what do you think the greatest challenge is in Monterey? In general, not, not in regards to policing, but I mean, is, is there anything that would be a challenge?
Well, I, in my last meeting, like I said with you, I, the greatest challenge for me going forward is going to be replacing the chief after thirty years. Just get my feet wet and, um, doing things maybe that the town hasn't seen for a few years, um, that, that'll be my biggest challenge. Um, and, uh, staying out of the politics, I think. There we go. It'll be, it'll be.
Right, sure.
Will be my, uh.
And, and, oh, again, I'm sorry, I always say my question. Do you, how do, do you perceive being the chief until you're as old as this guy?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I have probably a little over ten years left and, and this is where, where I wanna be. I wanna stay here and I wanna retire from here and, you know, I, you guys will know that you'll, you're safe and secure and you have a, a police chief for the next ten years and you won't have to worry about ever to do this again for, for a while. As long as that guy, but, you know, at least for ten, ten, twelve years, so.
Why do you limit yourself to ten years? Is that a retirement date that you're just hopeful for with the, with the fact?
Um. Ish, yeah. I mean, that's.
You know, the mandatory, sixty-five, right?
The mandatory sixty-five and, and, and.
Go through the math.
Yeah, no, plans, plans certainly change, you know, um, but ten, twelve years is, is, is the goal right now. Um, but like I said, plans change. I put that in the same, same longer than that. Um, I don't know if I necessarily wanna work till sixty-five. Fuck, I don't. Yeah.
Anything else you wanna tell us?
Uh, no, I, I just, I'm excited for the opportunity and, uh, I, I appreciate the time. Thank you guys for taking the time out of your day and all this. Well, thank you, uh, for your five years of service at Monterey and for joining us today. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
So we do have on our agenda review candidates and consider appointment, um, on today's agenda. Uh, if the board feels like it's ready to consider appointment, then we can certainly do that. If we'd rather uh, take time to review, uh, the interviews that we just did and check references, uh, that's up to the board, so. How do you feel?
Um, I would like to take, the only thing I haven't seen yet is, um, Jeff's references. I wouldn't mind taking a minute to read them. But I feel like it would be smart to at least have a conversation about it while, we just did it. It's fresh in our minds, even though we have notes. I think it would be good to at least have a conversation and see how we're feeling before we go the next step. Does that make sense? Did I have just like two minutes to read them?
Sure. I'm gonna take advantage. Want me to get something to Great Barrington? I can speak down there. I see a zip. Um, it's true, it's, it's, it's. I'm gonna device. Yes. And just me, or Ted, like everybody. I might be on tomorrow. But I'm not sure, it's like eleven. Yeah, we just need to, right? Oh, yeah. But it's wow, it has to be done wow. The people are there. Okay, the bank people. Try, try to do it. Which, like, very different directions, um, because...
Because from interviewing Brian, my sense is that he doesn't want to change the department that much. And that that may well be what the board, the board may well agree. That the, that the police department has been functioning as we want it to function and that we can continue on at status quo. Certainly Jeffrey is not only from the area, but you know, talked about programs and people that are kind of maybe new ideas to monitoring. And probably not all of them or most of them may not make sense to monitoring. But it seemed like going with Jeffrey would... He would be open to considering a review of the police department and possibly more, more changes. So it seems like, are we happy with the status quo and want, want to continue that or do we want to change? And personally, I would take the time to think about the interviews and to call references to see... To, to think more, more about it because before today, you know, I've seen Brian but, and I talked to him vaguely about his, his, how the police department's doing, but we've never really sat down and said, what would the department be like if you were going to be police? And so this is, you know, that was my first experience, although I've known Brian for a while and seen him in action. You know, hearing his visions for the police department moving forward, first time today. And this is my first time ever meeting, ever meeting Jeffrey. And would certainly want to hear more. I know we got some letters, but follow up with those people and learn more, more about him. Because he certainly has a lot of ideas for change. You know, I think I would take the time to, to think on it and make a decision next week or continue the discussion next week. But we do have a, a second motion.
But it's important to think of, and I, I understand the due diligence, as you know, I'm a big believer in common references. I have to say, I feel pretty comfortable with where our department is and I have taken the time to talk to Brian some about his vision. I think he's a very, like, he's a humble guy. But he has spoken to me at least about some of the things he'd like to see happen and I'm, I am impressed by the fact that we've had less turnover and I think that's in part due to working with folks. I see your point about the possibility of other programs. I don't, I don't know how much shakeup we need, but I know that Brian also wants to brim us towards accreditation and some of the training and things that come with that. I'd kind of like to see if we can take it. I, I know from talking to folks who interviewed him and talked to a lot of people of his references, they were outstanding and we have five news of his outstanding performance in the town. It speaks to him very directly. I respect what you said about not wanting to say too much, but I'm willing to, to put it off a week to let you make the choice.
Don't, don't put it off a week, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to put off the decision, but I think, you know, sometimes you're selecting someone to fill a job description and the question is, how well do they can fill a job description? I feel like this is more what direction ought the police department head? And one of the things about people with big ideas and want to make a lot of changes is those changes don't always come to fruition and some of them may make no sense to monitoring. But, and in many ways, the police department has served the town very well recently and I, you know, seen others change that. But, you know, with, with reaching out to elders, I know that's something that's been talked about for years, but it hasn't happened. If that's, you know, I just want, you know, if we're going to talk about something for years, let's have a plan and do it and see it, see it into action.
I'd like to get some insight on that. They did try to do something with the council on aging and unfortunately there was just a lot of independent seniors that didn't want to be part of the program. So they had a very hard time trying to institute. It doesn't mean that they couldn't try to revive it, maybe do it another way, but it failed because of that reason.
Something else that Brian said that was not spoken by Mr. Jeffrey was, he looked right at all three of us and he said, whatever you want my department to become, I'll try my best to make that become. I didn't get that from the first guy. He was coming in, in my opinion, he was under command. Make the department his department. I mean, he can say small town North Carolina all he wants, but since 2009, he's been in a big city with sixty-three, something between fifty, sixty full-time officers. I don't see that as, as our next chief. I mean, the guy is eloquent, he's slick, he speaks like he's been in the, you know, he's a city councilman. Brian, on the other hand, a little uptight, a little nervous. See it in his face. He calmed down and when he did, he got Brian. And I never felt like I got Jeffrey. Like he was, he was a suit that had a specific direction in mind and it was going to become his department heller boss. I like to promote from within myself. I feel that when you check some new reference, you might as well be calling their mother. Because they've already written everything that you could possibly imagine in a reference. Otherwise, you wouldn't stop your record, you'd just keep piling it on. So if you call somebody to say something that's already in the reference, what more do you gain out of it? The reference speaks for itself. Each of them have great references from outstanding people. I assume they're outstanding. We've got references from three of the local towns chiefs of police, where this guy is already a trained, some of them have been in the departments of these three local towns. He's respected by his fellow officers, by other chiefs of police. He's a candidate that our own chief feels strongly about. He's a candidate that, he shows himself every time. That people like Mr. Bay. They don't have to learn how to like this guy. I'm just not into the polish, I guess. So that's why I made my motion to appoint Brian.
And I think he showed a lot of commitment to the town and it's been a positive commitment. Nothing against Mr. Passeau, who I think is very, I'm sure he's very qualified and I have no doubt he'll find a good spot. If he actually, you know, if he really wants to downsize his department. Like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and say I, I support Brian.
All right. If there's no further discussion or comment, we'll call a vote on the motion to appoint Brian. But right before I do, actually, should we make an offer to Brian in terms of salary?
Do we have an offer?
Or is it an appointment first and then, and then, and then make an offer? Because we need to see if the officer's offer is going to be accepted.
What happened, what happened to the offer or the non-offer that was given to our director of operations when he was appointed? Was that offer, an offer or was that an equal salary for the position that he's taking?
So what happened was we made an offer to Jim, are you talking about when we hired Jim? We made an offer to Jim with, I forget the numbers, but it was a little bit lower of a salar... Hear me out, I know, because I know. We made an offer to Jim for a little bit lower of the salary and a certain, and it was an interim appointment and, you know, there was some kind of probationary period. And Jim came back and said, I would be willing to accept that if you removed the interim appointment. And the select board actually came back and offered him the position at the full salary that Sean had been making and without the interim provision, but with the probationary provision. And that's when Jim accepted. So there was an offer, a counteroffer, and then a counteroffer from the select board, which was accepted by Jim. So there is that negotiation process.
Do you have mine?
You want to do it now?
Just wondering what the chief makes currently and what Brian makes currently.
And what we budgeted for.
Yeah, what we budgeted for the year.
Right, that's why it would be important to know what we're budgeting for.
I think we've budgeted the new chief's position at the old chief's salary. I also think, you know, that decision was made in kind of extreme circumstances. When Jim was coming on to the department, they were short two members and we were headed into winter. So I don't think that that necessarily should be a precedent that's set. I think it's kind of an outlier.
I just want to make certain that it isn't something that became precedent.
No, I mean, that was, in my, to my understanding, it was kind of a one-time situation. I mean, the board, the people who did it was, was Steve and I. And it was extraordinary circumstances we were down. He was going to become one of three rather than one of five members. And it was like, right, it was in November.
Yeah, we were, we were, we were stuck and, and so, and, and, and yeah, you're right, we were missing men. So, on the crew, so he was going to do, not only was he going to do additional work, but he was going to take over the reins and right before winter. So we felt that that, those two issues made it prudent to, to go ahead and give him the same salary as Sean.
And he's done a nice any job, so he did.
And he did a good job.
Can I see that when you're done with it?
And since this, since this in theory is an internal hire, there is no real probationary period? Or we did, we did do a probationary period with Jen because it is...
His official start date as the chief would be the first of January.
But the other problem with probationary period is, is that you don't get sick days?
No, no, he gets it because he's a current employee. You're just giving him a probationary and more as a, as a, make sure that he works out as chief, that you want to keep him as a chief. And then you'll talk after that about, you know, the contracts that you have with the current chief transferring that to...
Well, that's the other question is, is contract, if we want to keep the contract the same.
If you could go through that during the probationary period.
Yeah.
So let's... My recommendation is you should take a, I think this contract is decent, but I would, my, my recommendation is you, at current council, take a fresh look at it.
Absolutely, if there's an opportunity to make changes.
Exactly.
Changing of the guard, changing potentially everything. And that's where our meetings, our, we need to be, that's our strength. That's where we do our new policy. So if there's an opportunity now to make changes that benefit the town, this is where we strike.
So we could offer him the job at this salary, starting in January with a probationary period as chief and if we will review the contract and that part, I'm not sure.
He's sixty-three now.
Who?
Not age.
Oh. I'm confused. Yep.
So do you go right in the middle as the offer?
Ah.
I mean, he's got to realize that he's new.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
This guy's been here thirty years.
Would you like me to get you the surrounding town salaries because...
No.
Well, I'm just saying that the current salary is much, is much lower than any chief around here.
Yeah, prevailing.
Egremont started a brand-new chief over there at almost ninety thousand dollars.
So you're saying, all right, now we're under...
Yes, I'm saying the eighty-five is a, is a almost equal offer to current surrounding. It's, it's actually...
Current new chiefs?
It's, it's lower, yes.
Yeah, I know, it's sticker shock all around.
It's the same thing for the director of operations. I mean, you do...
Well, do we have to have a dollar value today? See if...
You should just see if he wants it. What if he doesn't want the position of the...
Bring us back to the motion. So the motion is to appoint...
Yeah.
As the police chief beginning, I believe, beginning Jan. one, January first, twenty twenty-three. The motion says nothing about a monetary offer, it says nothing about a contract. It just says to appoint Brian, the chief, January first, twenty twenty-three. And I'm asking if the motion and the second wants to clarify that at all or just leave it, leave it completely vague at home because that's the entire motion.
But, so, but I, I think we have to amend it because I, I know if I were being hired, I wouldn't accept a position without, without a salary and, and other information. I would want those to be considered, so we should amend it.
Do we have a consensus as to what that dollar value would be?
What's the lowest chief's salary in South Carolina?
The other, the other...
It's probably us.
I, that's what I had.
The other thing is that this doesn't need to be done today, right? We're talking January first, the more time for transition, the better. But no, don't, let's not rush any decisions.
On what, the money?
Any, anything, but yeah, the money, the time.
Where you're incorrect.
Yeah.
Don't take it personally.
Yeah.
But you push things off.
Yeah.
And off and off. And that's what drives meetings to the extent of pulling on your hair.
Yeah.
Get something done and hammer it out and live with it or die with it.
I also feel like it's hard on the people that are waiting to give you...
Yeah, because number one, this guy, Mr. Bay, has already gone to two other departments looking for a very similar position and they are ready to hire him.
And I, I don't want to...
I would hate to see the town losing him. Have somebody told him he'd come in with him and then have to try to find an officer of his caliber. I mean, this guy is...
And he's already given us five years.
He's the face, he's the face of North Carolina, he's been here five years.
Egremont...
After watching Mr. Johnson's antics.
Egremont's eighty-seven, one oh three.
What's eighty-seven, one oh three?
The salary they're keeping there. And he's only been in the position, I think, for two years.
So you said it's eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven thousand, one oh three.
Okay, one oh three.
Stockbridge is ninety-four thousand, two fifty. Lennox, ninety-three, six thirty-six. West Stockbridge, I have sixty-five thousand to seventy-two thousand, he has a three-year contract, so that must be the...
For who, for which town?
West Stockbridge, Great Barrington, I think. My Great Barrington number is from twenty-twenty and that's ninety-eight thousand, one fifty-two.
So it's up to...
The big department.
He's below it, ours is the lowest.
Northern Stockbridge?
Um, sorry, um, yeah.
No.
No, sorry. Ours is second, right, second lowest. And you said Sheffield earlier. Sheffield, I don't have.
So, okay, my consent is, so the current chief is, is being paid how much?
Eighty-five.
Okay. And Brian, it's just so acknowledged, so this is something...
Sorry?
Brian's, what, sixty?
Sixty, just over sixty-four.
Sixty-three?
And Brian does have twenty-plus years of experience as an op, so...
Quite frankly, I, I, speaking of a member of the public here, going to have a new chief, I don't see, I don't, I don't see it, I, I would be, it would be perfectly reasonable to offer them the exact same salary or the two options would be either offering the exact same salary or right come in between or, or meet some way in the middle. But, but the problem with meeting in the middle is that, as you, as Scott had mentioned, there are a number of police departments that are, everybody's still looking. There's a lot of, there's, there's not a lot of manpower out there. Manpower, smaller. So my, so my recommendation, if I was sitting at the table...
Um, just the amendment to add the money amount to it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Scott, yes. Justin, uh, yes. And is there any other discussion or comments about the motion about the appointment and offer?
The only other thing would be, do we need to also then to include a probationary period? And do we want to have a commitment about the contract and if so, what should that look like? I, I, this is out of my, I, I don't know, it's what I'm asking.
I don't know either.
Could I make a re- recommendation?
Please.
Um, I think if you vote on the appointment, the contract details should probably be discussed with the chief and the administrator and then presented to you, that'd be my recommendation.
Well, actually, we're in Senate Town Council for review, we, I think that was the consensus.
Well, they could make, they could look at it and say what they, it already needs to be changed and then we could add.
They'll prob- they'll probably be doing their contract similar to mine.
So we'll deal, we can deal with the contract at a later date, is that understood?
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is as follows, appoint Brian Faye as chief of police of the town of Monterey, beginning January first, twenty twenty-three for an amount of eighty-five thousand dollars and eighty-nine a year. Um, with uh, the contract to be decided and proba- we didn't have probationary period. Um, but I don't know that we need.
I think he's served five years probationary.
I think he's been in there, so, and, and no probationary period and, and I'll call a vote on that motion. Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Justin, yes, meeting adjourned at four twenty-four P. M.
Thank you, guys.